Okay, great. Great job, guys.
Okay, we're not done yet, boys and girls. We are not done, so we have two more teams we need to recognize. And we're gonna start off with the championship, the PAL Peewee Teams, the cheerleading, and our football team. I hear you guys won a big championship last month, huh? Exciting, pretty cool. Nice job. You know, we have a former PAL football player right here in the room, and he's also the mayor of the township. Mayor Parisia, I think, oh, I'm sorry. And our business administrator, Mr. Sarris, was also a PAL kid.
He's older than me.
But with your coaches and all, we know, I do not play for the PAL, but my children all were participants of the program. I don't know if you remember Coach Tony, so he's, he helps about now. He kind of is in retirement. But for many years, we know how hard the council recognizes tonight, how hard you work. You know, this starts on August 1st. And that's a lot of days for your parents, a lot of long summer days, long summer nights. And, you know, many years, you know, you give up your vacation time to get to practice in the summer, not an easy task to do, especially when you go to the beach, but you know, you have to be there because you're committed athletes. And that is just great recognition. And all your hard work, from the summer on into the fall, when you have to start your homework and go to practices after school, has all paid off with this great championship that you won. So first, I'm gonna ask for your cheerleading coach to come up, Michelle Merklinger, to say a few words.
So this was my first bout with cheerleading. I grew up in PAL, but from the sidelines. My brothers played, my father coached, my uncle played. So this was a new experience, but the girls did a great job. They were there every day for practice, starting August 1st with the guys for football. Rain, cold weather, they were out there on the track cheering for the football players. So, great job by everyone, I'm really proud of all of you. With that...
Okay, before we call you up, ladies, I am going to read your citation from the council. "The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize the West Orange PAL Peewee Cheerleading Team." And all your names are on the citation, along with your coaches, Cheryl Merklinger, Karen Kurwashi, and Alyssa Voel. "Throughout the football season, the West Orange PAL Cheerleading Team, Peewee Cheerleading Team, supported the PAL Peewee Football Players from the sidelines, supporting their efforts and cheering them on to an undefeated record of 11 wins and zero losses." Nice job, ladies. "The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize and congratulate the cheerleading team on their dedication and wishes them continued success in the future." All right, ladies, I'm gonna have your coach call you up individually, if you could come back like the baseball team did for your picture.
Jessica Chermonti. Marie Costa-Sparfs. Rebecca Hemphey. Caitlin McColl. Emma Pearson. Maggie Rinsler. Jaylee Sampson. Melina Sanchez. Lily Targansky. And Armani Turner.
Okay, last but not least, undefeated. It's gonna be a good banquet this week. Okay. So I'd like to call up Coach Joe Di Pasqua. And before we get to the kids, real quick, could you just, which board members are here? I just want to recognize the PAL board.
My brother Lou's here. Let's see who else is here. Cheryl's here.
Timmy Coaches too.
Phil's here. Coach Atuzi. Rob Cops.
Very good. Coach Tom. Are you getting him on the board yet? Which one of you guys? Come on. Oh, coaches Lou and Tom. Come on up, come on down. I just wanted, I just wanted to recognize, little guys. You guys ready? I just wanted to recognize the, not only the coaches, but our board members that are here this evening as well. As you know, you see them in the snack bar all the time, they're working tirelessly, they are put in more hours than any, any people I know here in the township, so they're really dedicated volunteers. And most of them have been doing this for a good, at least 30 years now. So, thank you to all the board and the PAL for keeping up the program. We're celebrating, what, you're celebrating over 50 years now, right? Close to 60?
Yeah, so, 55.
55 years, so something, they must be doing something right. Okay, so you're, so this undefeated team that we have in front of us, your citation reads, "The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize the West Orange PAL Peewee..." Cheryl, you took the wrong, wrong one, Cheryl. We just have to swap this out, or so. Yeah, yeah, we have the two cheerleading ones, that's okay. That's okay, guys, I have it. "Is proud to recognize the West Orange PAL..." Okay, we, we're gonna owe you new certificates, we gotta get your new certificate. That's okay, guys, the guy, their names are on it. Peewee Football Team. So we'll collect your, we'll reissue the ones out to you for the, for the banquet, Friday night is your banquet, correct? Okay. So the ones on Friday will say, "The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize the West Orange PAL Football Team. The West Orange PAL Football Team completed a perfect season with 11-0 undefeated record on November 18, 2017. They won the Hudson County Youth Football Lightweight Championship over Passaic." Nice job, guys. "The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize and congratulate the team on their excellent sportsmanship and wishes them continued success in the future." Before we call you up, I'd just like Coach Di Pasqua to say a few words about you.
Thank you, Michelle. You know, it's pretty special when you get a group of guys come August 1st, and you're practicing with them every day and every night, and you just got that feeling that something special could happen. And to go out every Sunday or Saturday night and play these teams that we're playing, some of these big towns that we play, and just really dominate them, and really just go out and... Again, 11 games, scored 295 points, we only gave up 38. We, we were just really the best team out there. The only team that could beat us would be ourselves, and the kids just really worked hard, really worked together, really pulled for each other. Right from August 1st till November 18th. It's just really a long season. They all showed up for practice every night. And again, it does get a little tedious or monotonous, but when you're driving for that championship, it really, what's the word I'm looking for? Really, an excellent tribute to the kids who just come every night and played, listened to us, executed our game plan, and just really, again, dominated. There was no better team than us, and I'm very, very proud. It's one of the better teams, me and my brother, been around with the PAL a long time, and I, I'll put them up there in my, my top five and everything, they're really, really a good team. So with that, we'll call up each player. Okay, Aaron Baxter. Eileen Bowman. Bryce Bradley. Savian Carson. Cyrie Coleman. Cyrie, multi-talented, plays baseball and football, as you can tell. Jahan Conway. Bryce Davis. Whose father also played for the PAL and won a championship. John Del Rosso. Thank you. Gabe Garcia. Jason Hill. DeAndre Jenkins. Markai Jenkins. Gash Jones. Eden Jones. Ryan K. Schaefer. Brendan Kearns. Oliver Kick. Alex Krantz. Tiago Lovato. Weston Lipsy. Brian Mantilla. Nate Masson. Timmy McColl. Graylin Meeks. Emmanuel Miranda Jr. Nathaniel Mitchell. Ryan Morse. Tyrone Muljum. Caleb Passels. TJ Ware. Markai Williams. Xavier Williams. And Zach Williams.
Welcome back, West Orange. We had a slight break to let the crowds leave and also to set up for the next agenda item. What we're gonna see, what we're gonna see and hear next is a report from the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission. We're gonna have Brian Feeney, chairman, Marty Feitlowitz, vice chairman, and Patrick Harshbarger, who's, has been the consultant to the commission for the last couple of years, I guess. Basically, the commission has been getting for the last few years state grants to fund surveys of various parts of town, looking to identify historically and architecturally significant properties here in town, buildings and properties, for recognition and potential designation as historic places. So, I just asked the folks to come up and just explain a little bit more to the town about the results of their work, which I, I hope you find interesting. I find it quite fascinating, some of the work. So without further ado, Mr. Feeney?
And thank you for inviting us tonight. We, we appreciate the visibility. You know, we are an official arm of the township government, but a lot of times, people ask, well, who are you? Are you an historical society, or you this, you that? Not at all. We are part of the government. Everyone who is, sits on the commission is appointed by, by the mayor. Our nine members are made up of architects, preservationists, archivists, members of the arts community, and interested citizens. Now, anyone who's lived here in West Orange knows that the rich cultural history of the township is reflected in the incredible collection of 19th and 20th century properties that dot nearly every block here in the town. They interpret our history, and they represent the, I like to think, the collective commitment that is shown throughout the West Orange community to preserving our history for future generations. And we all know how important that is, because these are the sort of things that can change or disappear, and then it's, it's a loss to our history. We, you know, we here in West Orange really are a community. We're not, we're not a transit community with continual turnover. I mean, there are people that live on my street that are second generation, and they never want to let those houses go out. They're, they expect their children to take those houses too. So, it's, it is important that we always preserve what we can for future generations. Now, for our part, the commission does two things toward that effort. First, we work to build and maintain an updated inventory and description of our commercial and residential properties here in the township. And then using that information, we recommend the most important properties to be designated by the council, and only the council has the authority to do that, to recommend that they designate them local historic landmarks. We've been very fortunate that we have applied for and received grants from the state of New Jersey over the last few years totaling about $50,000 to be able to do these surveys. We don't do them ourselves, we have to hire a consulting firm who specializes in that. But they are going to build a knowledge base for the township that will inform us, inform the planning board, the zoning board, the council, and be a great source of research for anyone who wants to go to the library or eventually go online and see what these sort of things are about. And it really does paint a great picture of the town. And then, for those properties that are designated, and for any property, you know, if someone were to ask us for help, we always offer it. We work with the owners of those properties to guide them, excuse me, so that the restoration effort is always maintained and done within the standards of national historic preservation. Marty?
This is not what I'm gonna say. I had to jot something down, and I grabbed the nearest piece of paper, and it was attached to other papers. Yeah, historic preservation is something very near and dear to me. At least over the last 20 years, it's been that long since I've been actually appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission. And at first, I was told, you know, you meet once a month, that's it, no, no effort. I figured I put in about 2,000 hours so far, over the 20 years. And it's been an eye-opener for me, because I really didn't, as not a native-born West Oranger, I was actually a native of Patterson, up the road a bit. But as someone who wasn't born into West Orange and its society, it's very rich in historic facilities. We may not realize it, because so much of what's been done in recent years has caused some of those wonderful properties to go away, especially Mansion Row along the ridge, where the General McClellan, actually Governor McClellan, lived for the time that he was governor. And they're all gone. And I realize that if we don't work hard to try to preserve the architectural, historical, and cultural interests that have been held in this town for many years, we're just gonna look like any other place. But we're kind of special, we're very unique in that respect. And I just felt one quote would sort of sum things up, and this was written or stated by the first keeper of the National Register of Historic Places, so I don't know how far back that goes. But he said, "It's been said that at its best, preservation engages the past in a conversation with the present over a mutual concern for the future." And I think that very succinctly sums up what it is that we try to do. So I just want to report to you that, as of right now, today, there are two major projects going on in town. One you can see from this building, and that's St. Mark's Church. We can see the beginnings of the re-roofing that's going to take place, and it's a very positive, sort of the second step that's being taken. The first step was to stabilize the walls. This step will be to keep the weather from raining in or snowing into the building. So it is rather slow, but progress is being made. We're working with them. Along the way, we're, we're trying to be very respectful of the past, but we understand the necessities of present-day finances. The other project is the Edison Battery Building, which is a little further down on Main Street. And I think you all begin to see the shape and form of it now. And I think it's quite remarkable that we now have one of Edison's major buildings, the only one left other than his National Laboratory site, restored instead of demolished. And then along with that, there has been other buildings that go on the site, and we've been watching those very carefully to see that they, in whatever way we can possibly influence it, comes out compatible to the historic building. So, we want mostly the council to be brought up to date, but certainly all members of the public to know that we do exist. We are here, we're, we're all volunteers, but under our president, we've been able to accomplish an awful lot. And I think, Patrick, you have a nice story to tell.
It's been my pleasure over the past three to four years to conduct a number of planning surveys of historical properties in West Orange. And I just want to follow up on what Marty said, that in my experience, West Orange is indeed a very historically unique place. You have an incredibly rich number of historic buildings and historic landscapes here that really tell the story of this township and its families and its residents. I've been doing this kind of work since the late 1980s, so almost 30 years. I've worked all over New Jersey, and this is not hyperbole, it's, it's, it's really something, what you've got here. You've got a Long Valley Road, houses that date back to the colonial period in the American Revolution. You've got an amazing Llewellyn Park, which is a nationally significant, the model for the American suburb as it developed. It's an amazing, nationally-known place. You've got great Victorians and Queen Anne's and mansion houses. You've got the unique topography that makes West Orange what it is as a, as a place. It's, it's near enough to Newark and New York City to have been one of America's first suburbs, but it's got the wonderful ridge with its views. It makes it really an amazing place, so... And within that, there are diners and houses and commercial buildings and wonderful churches and wonderful schools. So I, I want to tell you a little bit about our surveys and what we've done. I've got about 10 slides, I'm gonna try to hold it to about eight or nine minutes and move rather quickly. But as Brian said, the, this is the next slide, I can't really see. Okay, there we are. The, these grant, these plant, these planning surveys have been funded by the New Jersey Historic Preservation Office. It has a, a competitive grants program, which the HBC has been very successful at getting some of these grants. The money actually comes from the National Park Service through the state to the township. So it's a, it's a federally-funded project in the end, although the Park Service has very little direct involvement at the local level. The last time the township was surveyed was 1992, so it's been about 25 years. And so it was definitely time to do an update. A lot has changed in a quarter century. And it was a good time to get a handle on this and to help the HPC understand what, what had changed and what, what might not have been thought of as being particularly historic 25 years ago, very often is today. Just to make a real quick point, when I started in this business in the 1980s, Victorian houses like Queen Anne's were sort of sneered upon by architectural historians. They were considered sort of gauche. And they, many of them were not considered particularly historic. Well, now, you know, beautiful Queen Anne houses are considered very historic. So tastes have changed, perceptions of history change over time. So it is important to update these surveys frequently. You know, every, every 20 or 30 years is a good, a good benchmark, at least. And we've surveyed 207 properties in three neighborhoods, St. Cloud, the Main Street corridor, and Lower Gregory, and a little bit of Upper Gregory. And we've produced three volumes of reports, which are on file in the planning office. And as you can see from this slide, there's a, there's a survey form for every property we surveyed that includes photographs and maps, little bits of history, descriptions. Most of the forms are somewhere between seven and 10 pages long. We do, you know, as thorough a job as we can in the time allotted. So the next slide. Our, our methodology in doing this is we use really pretty modern tools. We use GIS for our mapping, and we get coordinates and lot corners and building sizes and all that, and it goes into a file, which we, we produce electronically. We do all our work in a Microsoft Access database, which is getting a little old, but it's the state standard at the State Preservation Office. We send out teams of architectural historians, we take photographs, we do all our work from the public right-of-way on the sidewalks and the streets. We don't enter private... We don't enter private property unless somebody comes out and asks us what we're doing and if they're interested. We have been invited in occasionally, but that's not our goal. We really respect private property rights, and this is a planning survey just to collect data from what we can see from the street. We develop what I call a story context, which are histories of the neighborhoods essentially, and how they fit into the overall township history and the state history. We do individual property researches using things like titles and old tax records and maps. And then at the end, we use well-accepted criteria to determine if individual properties meet West Orange's landmark, local landmark criteria, which are essentially the same as the state and national register criteria. So next slide. And so if you were to look into our reports, these are the kinds of things you would see about the different study areas. We do a lot of map analysis, there's some wonderful historic maps of, this is of St. Cloud showing what it looked like in 1881. Black dots represent buildings and lines or property outlines, and you can see, you know, what a much less dense development pattern there was, but there were very large Queen Anne's being built along streets or on very favorable lots for views. And so we do a lot of this kind of analysis. The next slide is the Main Street Corridor, and, you know, we looked along Main Street from about St. Mark's up to just beyond Tory Corner, and we've surveyed lots of commercial buildings, a little workers' neighborhood next to the Edison Factory, and some civic buildings here in town, the churches, this building, the old school building, and get a sense of how that developed over time. And it's an unusual Main Street because it sort of stretches out along the Old Valley Road, and so it has a couple little distinctly characteristic areas. Tory Corner's a little different from the area right around the Edison Labs, which is a little different from down here at St. Mark's, and they sort of create their own little vignettes of a Main Street as it developed in West Orange. And then finally, most recently, we surveyed the Lower Gregory Neighborhood, which is a classic, what we would call interwar neighborhood. It developed between World War I and World War II, and it's the first expressions of the automobile suburb. These are the first houses you're going to see that instead of carriage houses, actually have garages. And there are lots of revival styles, Gothic revival, Tudor revival, colonial revival, craftsmen. It's an amazing mix as the suburbs spread out this direction, and you get to see some of the civic amenities that attracted people here, particularly the schools. There's a number of really finely-built early 20th century schools there. So next slide. And then our reports end with our recommendations, and these are our professional assessments, our most objective assessments of which of the properties we surveyed meet, in our judgment, the eligibility criteria that are set out in the Township Ordinance for local landmark status, as well as potentially being listed on the New Jersey or National Registers of Historic Places. And of the 200-some-odd properties that we surveyed, it's our professional judgment that about 40 of them could be potentially eligible as local landmarks or for the New Jersey or National Registers of Historic Places. This doesn't mean they get listed, it just means they meet the criteria for listing. And our reports have tables like the one you see here, which sort of summarize our findings, and a little thumbnail of each building, and a brief description, and our assessment. And then the next slide. And we also have produced some, you know, some interpretive maps that summarize our results in a geographic fashion. So this is the one for the Main Street Corridor, and you can see by the different shading which buildings we surveyed, which buildings we thought, or properties we thought had potential to be listed as local or state or national landmarks. And also, you know, there are some historic districts. Llewellyn Park is already on the state and national register, and we have made some preliminary recommendations that there could be historic districts here, too. So, next slide. So how's this data all get used? Well, it gets used by the Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, in helping them to fulfill their responsibilities under the applicable Township ordinances. And it also should be used to inform the Historic Preservation Section of the Township Master Plan when that gets next updated. You know, and these are, you know, mostly questions of local landmarking and planning and zoning. There's historical information, it tells about the materials of the houses, what are character defining characteristics that might be preservation-worthy under certain circumstances. And they're also used by state and federal agencies under their applicable laws. These laws really protect eligible properties from the actions of state and federal government. In other words, these are the kinds of things that they turn to if a new highway's going to be built, or a road's going to be widened, and it's going to end up like impacting the front yard of one of these glorious houses. They'll be looking at this to assess what kind of impact they're having on historic preservation. So they'll be using it from their planning point of view, but it's really not so much a local planning issue as only those projects that are funded and undertaken and regulated by agencies of state government or federal government. So we're talking about DOT, Federal Highways, DEP, those kinds of state and federal agencies. And then, I think most importantly, really, these reports are out there to educate and inform the people of the township about the histories of their neighborhoods, about the histories of the properties they own. It's a great way to take some pride, understand the generations that have come before you, and things that make your place really unique from an historical point of view. And potentially, for income-producing properties, properties that are eligible can be, can take advantage of federal tax credits for historic preservation, at least as things stand at the moment. And then finally, two more slides. So, okay, so what's next, Patrick? Well, you know, there are other neighborhoods to survey, there are grants every year, so it's definitely something that the HPC should consider continuing with. Also, you know, this sets the stage for actually designating local properties, and, you know, the things that sort of, how do you choose which of those 40 properties to locally designate? Well, it has something to do with perceptions of threat, you know, level of support of the property owner and the community for designating it. It's a community decision, it's one that's made here through the processes set out in the ordinance. I'm just advising you that I think it meets the criteria, not that you have to go do this, but this is something that starts through the process and can begin with your HPC. And then, of course, there can be public programs, use some of this information to get out and give guided tours. You could do a historic house tour and encourage people to, you know, come and enjoy their wonderful architecture and their beautiful houses. You could, you know, Tory Corner has a wonderful history, which could be sort of, you know, massaged into, you know, creating an identity for the shoppers who come there, a place to come, and they sort of see that history as part of the shopping experience. So things can be done creatively with this information, and it's really up to the community to decide what. And then finally, just a few brief words about the national and state register. Properties that are deemed to be eligible can be listed on the state and national registers. That can only be done with the private property owner's consent. It does, as I said, give protection against government undertakings, and there's the tax credit that I also mentioned. But I think mostly, it's a kind of a big warm hug from the National Park Service's National Register to, you know, recognize these amazing buildings and their history, and, you know, you can get a plaque and really celebrate the houses and buildings that get listed. And there can sometimes be state grants as well for preservation projects. So that's kind of a quick run-through of what we've been doing, and I can entertain questions?
Mr. Harshberger, thank you very much. I've been sitting in meetings and heard a lot of the like, it's going to be fascinating stories about some of these properties. If somebody such as me came to you in this moment and said, what would you say are the two properties in town that you think residents would be most interested in hearing about? Could you give like a two-minute or a minute on those properties?
Well, it sort of puts me a little in the spot, but there are a couple that, there are actually several that come to mind, but I think the one that is, really blew my socks off was the state diner. And you guys all know it, but, and there are a lot of diners in New Jersey, you know it, but I couldn't believe it because it was closed the day I was there, and I'm peering in the plate glass window, and I'm looking at the finishings in there, and I'm like, oh my gosh, you know, this is an amazing gem of a tiny little diner. And, I mean, most of you probably know the diner stories about how they were prefabricated, like railroad cars and, you know, shipped off, and, you know, if you bought a diner, you know, if you were somebody who wanted to get into the diner business, the guys that built the diner for you would come out and they would advise you on your menu, and about how you would, you know, set up, and how much, how many eggs you needed to buy, and how many loaves of bread. And particularly, in this part of New Jersey, Greek immigrants were drawn particularly to this business, and they weren't necessarily the ones building the diners, but they were getting a lot of advice from the people who built these diners, and it's a great story. And you've got one of the, one of the hidden gems of a diner here. The other property that sort of intrigues me is the, well, the one that the story everybody loves is about the mobster who, you know, this Willman House where he did himself in, and it, but it, but it has that history behind it, but it's an amazing Tudor revival house of the 1920s period, and that's a really, really special place as well. I love the churches. I think you've got an amazing set of churches. I think particularly because they speak to a period of time when West Orange was clearly a suburb, but they were still into the image of being a kind of a country place, a peaceful place. And so these churches look very much like they're modeled after the little parish churches of England and France, and the small churches of New England towns, and with a little bit, a few upgrades, but, you know, that's sort of the image they were going for, and you've got an amazing set of those. And I really, you know, encourage the work that's being done at St. Mark's, but some of the other churches are also up at St. Cloud's, and the one up here that they built out of concrete in homage to Edison is another one that's a nice church.
Any other questions?
What about the Bamberger Mansion? What was the status of it?
Oh, was that the, surveys, right. So we haven't had a chance to survey the Bamberger Mansion yet. We just, we've just finished Lower Gregory, and we started on to the west side of Upper Gregory, or Gregory Avenue at sort of the north end, but haven't gotten very far yet.
I was just going to make a comment about how timely this is because on Sunday we had our holiday open house and guided historic tours of the old Main Street Corridor, and we had an estimated 350 people.
Great.
Ride these tours, and council members narrate, narrate historical significance of new properties.
Fabulous, I hadn't heard that. That's great, that's great.
And I really enjoyed this picture because I own a school in town, First Mountain, and I understand that the Canadian doctor that invented the logins came to West Orange to test out his invention right down First Mountain, so that picture that I took.
Any other questions?
Yes, I was curious to find out, there's a story down in the valley that there's a house on the corner of Valley, or in the South Valley and Forest Hill Road, that George Washington stayed at, or something of that nature, some history about that? Now, I wonder if you found any information about that?
That house does date from the Revolutionary War period, Valley Road was here. The, I have not seen it substantiated that Washington actually slept there. That's, he did sleep some places, obviously, but the question is, can you go back to the documentary record and see in one of his letters that he says, "I stayed with, you know, Farmer So-and-so in his house this night," or "I stopped there." What most of these sort of Washington slept here stories are about is that we can prove that he definitely saw the house, because we know his route, the way he marched and the different routes he took. He traveled Valley Road, you know, there's no doubt he saw that house. Did he actually stop there and visit? We don't know for sure, but that's sort of where that kind of story comes from. It's a good one.
Can you comment?
When you designate any property as a historic property in West Orange, do you also take into account the natural environment around it, including the trees and whatever else is around? Do you have to be a historic property?
Well, when we look at it from a historic preservation perspective, what you're talking about are landscape elements. And when we do see what we think to be a historically significant landscape associated with the property, we do, we do consider that and bring it out as one of the character-defining characteristics. We're often looking for walls, planting patterns, and those kinds of things. Of course, you know, a tree's life, there are some trees that really can live, you know, for hundreds of years, but most of the trees you see aren't that old. And one of the things about the register and the Township Ordinance is that our cutoff date is 50 years. It has to be 50 years old in order to be part of the historic fabric, and so, you know, when we look at a lot of those kinds of plants, very often, they aren't quite that old.
One more, and then...
Mr. Harshberger, would you care to comment on the historic markers that are going to this area and has been created along Main Street?
Yeah, I love it. I haven't, I actually been out to read them all, so I don't want to, I can't comment on the content, but, you know, everything you can do to bring attention to it, and you've got, there are a lot of resources here for local history. I bring a sort of a perspective from sort of, from the sort of the state level down to the local, and sort of, so I can make the comparisons, like, this is a really great Queen Anne, not just in West Orange, but anywhere. But, you know, there are people here who are really, truly experts in local history, and I rely heavily on their publications and input.
So thank you, Mr. Harshberger, thank you, Mr. Feigen, Mr. Finley. Thanks very much. We'll just pause in the meeting and clean things up, and then we'll get back going. Next on the agenda is a nomination for council president, which is something we do every year in December, and the term runs on the calendar year. This will be my last meeting unless something extraordinary comes up between now and January 1st. And I would just, very briefly, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to further serve the council and the township of West Orange as council president this year. I want to thank my colleagues, I want to thank the clerk and her staff, and I want to thank the administration for not only their help, but also their patience as I got up to speed. And I thought at the beginning of the year that it was going to be really nice not to have anybody ask me anymore, why aren't you council president? And that's actually happened, nobody's asking me that, but what they're asking me is that, well, they're not really asking me, they're telling me that they thought I would be a better council president. So I would just like to say, I think I improved a great deal from the first of the year to the end of the year, but I appreciate everybody's, everybody's patience and help. And I'm always going to treasure this experience, I appreciate it for everybody. But getting back to nominations for council president, I don't know, does anybody want to say anything, or do you want to just nominate now?
Well, I'd like to say something, but also make a nominee, but I'd like to say something first, if it's okay.
Okay, get your hand up, please.
With council president and my council colleagues, first of all, thank you, council president, for guiding us through a year, for your guidance and for your patience with a lot of issues and your foresight, and I hope you had an enjoyable and educational experience and everything, but thank you, and it was a pleasure serving on the council with you as council president.
Thank you.
So, and if I may move forward, council president, if I'm allowed to right now, is I'd like to make a nomination for our next council president, and that would, then I'm the councilwoman Susan McCartney for our next council president.
Is there a second?
Victor, you second that?
Any discussion? Councilman?
No discussion, but council president, I would also like to echo the sentiment, and it's really, you know, the meetings run long sometimes.
That's come up once or twice this year.
It's a testament to your passion and your commitment, and you can't question that, okay? So we really appreciate it, and, you know, I'm glad that, you know, you've served us, and it's been a smooth ride. We appreciate that, we appreciate the guidance, and we appreciate, thank you for the service.
Thank you. Councilman?
Well, I would say a third for Council McCartney, but Joe, thank you, you did a nice job. You know, we had some long meetings, but we do a lot here up in the chamber, and it's hard... up in the chamber. And it's hard because, you know, folks come up and they're passionate about, uh, giving us information, asking us a lot of questions. And, you know, we try to get everybody answers. And I think that, that's been done this year. So, thank you. Nice job.
Thank you. So we've got, uh, motion in a second. Does anybody want to say? Councilman, would you like to defend your nomination?
I will say thank you for the nomination. I accept the nomination. And I wanted to say to Joe that, uh, though we don't always, we have not always seen eye to eye, I do appreciate, and I promise to emulate, um, the, how you preserved order and decorum throughout the whole year, uh, really at every meeting. And I do appreciate that. And I promise that I will continue that. So, on that note-
We have a motion on the floor. Is there any other nominations?
Right. Is there any other nominations? Okay. We'll take a vote. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Garino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krovia?
Yes. Motion carries?
Yes. Congratulations.
Councilwoman McCartney will be our next, uh, council president.
In the meantime-
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You would like to, on behalf of the-
Give a round of applause first.
On behalf of my colleagues?
Oh, wow.
Here's a gamble, so can't beat the majority.
Thank you very much.
Now, I'm gonna read what it says. It says, "In appreciation for your dedicated service and commitment to the township of West Orange and your leadership role as council president."
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Nice job. Make a good picture.
I don't, I really don't. Thanks. Wait, we're looking at it.
Wow. Thanks very much.
You should be able to do it.
As you've probably noticed, Mayor Carisi is, is present tonight and he had just asked to be allowed to say a few words. So you say as many as you'd like, Mayor.
Thank you, council president, and thank you for giving me a few moments. Um, we all, it's not hard to be disheartened when we look at the nature of our political discord in this country. I don't think any of us exaggerate when we say that it certainly seems a lot worse than it maybe ever has. We often like to talk about how West Orange is a microcosm for this country. And sometimes I wish that the country took us as an example in their political discord. I've been a member of council for, for 19 years involved in government here in, in West Orange. And every year, no matter who was on the council, who was the mayor, and who was the council president, we all work together for the good of the community to ensure that we do what ultimately is our primary responsibility, keep the public safe and deliver the services that people are expected to. Uh, council president, it's no secret you and I don't always agree on process. But I'll say that, uh, it's been a pleasure to work with you this year. And any of those disagreements on process was always put aside in working with Jack and John for the good of the community. And I'd like to thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And, uh, just to end off, Sue, it's obviously, uh, we've worked with you before. We'll look forward to it. Um, you've been here a long time. You're a glutton for punishment. But as always, the administration is here to support the council in our combined efforts in supporting the community. So best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next on the agenda, also this time of year, the council, uh, determines who's going to be council liaison to the various organizations that we support, generally through, uh, an ordinance, uh, that we have here in the municipality that actually tells us that we need a liaison. So there's a list in the, uh, in the conference agenda. Uh, I don't know what their agenda items own here, but just wanna go through them, I think fairly quickly. Um, and what I'll do is I'll just announce it. And then if anybody has a, a nomination, please just raise your hand. I'll recognize it. The first, uh, the first item is the planning board. Uh, Councilwoman McCartney's the liaison for the moment, or for the year. Does anybody have any nominations?
I nominate-
Well, we don't really need to nominate because I'm gonna be doing a resolution in the first meeting of next year, just to appoint everybody. So I just need to know who's going to be appointed to these committees. So it doesn't necessarily need to be a nomination.
Yeah.
Just as, you know-
Because we could do, where, do you see any changes?
Right. Well, let me just ask you. Susan, would you like to continue as many more? Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Good. We got that one? See what I mean about patience? I should know this. This is what, my seventh year when we're doing this? Okay. Uh, local assistance board. Councilwoman Castellino, would you like to continue?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Uh, Degnan House, Councilman Cirillo is the liaison?
Yes.
Would you like to continue?
Yes.
Everybody okay?
Yes.
Uh, the Rena House, Councilman Garino is the liaison. You want to continue?
Thank you, council president.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Uh, the Downtown West Orange Alliance, Councilman, uh, Garino is the liaison there. Would you like to continue?
Thank you, council president.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Uh, the West Orange Municipal Alliance Committee, this is, uh, Councilwoman Castellino. Would you like to continue?
Yes.
Everybody okay with that? West Orange Arts Council, Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, thank you.
Everybody okay? Great. Open Space and Recreation Committee, that's, uh, I'm the liaison there. I'd like to continue. Is everybody okay with that?
Great.
And the Public Relations Commission, Councilwoman Castellino, would you like to continue?
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Super. We good?
See, see how cooperative-
I've been serving, now is it unofficial? Do we need to be official with the liaison to the West Orange Board of Education? We don't have that on here.
Yeah, we haven't, we've never made that.
I'd like to continue serving as, it's on the ordinance.
It's not in the ordinance.
If it's not in the ordinance-
Yeah, it's more of an informal, so-
Okay, yeah, no, so it doesn't need a reservation.
Okay, everybody's good with me, serving.
And we have a meeting.
Talking to my school board friends. Okay.
Yeah, like I've, I've sort of made myself the liaison for the Historic Preservation Commission, but that's not in the ordinance.
Oh, that's right. That's not on here also.
So I just come and talk, you know?
Right.
So we're good?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful. Uh, next item is, uh, downtown redevelopment. Mr. Sayers?
Downtown redevelopment is moving along very, very nicely. Um, to do things, as I said before, they've been putting in the plumbing and the electricity. So everything's getting tied in and the, uh, ready to go. They're still saying that they may do something, um, by April. Um, but I'm still not sure if that's gonna happen. But, um, they are making a lot of progress, I can tell you that.
And when you say something, you mean actually having tenants move in?
Having, yes.
Okay. Councilwoman?
Um, the storefronts, I see, are they designated, like where we see openings for doors, I guess? Are they?
The whole bottom floor is gonna be storefronts. Everything above that-
Are they all leased already? Do they know who's coming in?
They're not all leased yet, no.
Some of them look like doorways, but then some of them don't. I just couldn't tell what they were doing there.
As far as I know, they're not all leased yet.
Okay.
They're still talking to people. Actually, I, I heard yesterday and I tried to verify today, but I wasn't able to get in touch with my, the guy down there. But, uh, supposedly they're talking about a Starbucks being in there.
Really?
You need to speak into the microphone with that news.
Especially on that news.
Mr. Sayers. What was that again?
They're talking about having a Starbucks in there and, and they're hoping to get that, hoping to get that done.
Jojo Starbucks.
Yep.
Jojo Starbucks, that's what they meant, yeah.
But I don't know that for a fact yet.
And the parking deck, when will that be?
Parking decks, I think is, is, I don't think it's completed, but it's pretty much almost completed. It's, it's all up in the back. You can't see it because the R over R in the front blocks the deck. So you can't actually see the deck.
Which is nice.
Yeah, it was all designed that way.
Okay.
I'll get you. Counselor-
That's it. That's all I got.
Counselor?
Thank you, council president. Mr. Sayers, you know what I'm gonna ask, right?
Um, let me think. Uh, to be quite honest with you, I have, go ahead.
No, I'd like to know, is there any marketing packages yet? Any marketing scope?
I haven't seen an official marketing package, but I know they are out marketing on their own.
Is there anything we can get from, uh, from them to get an idea of how they're marketing it and to the marketing it?
I can talk to them and see if they, I, I'm pretty sure they don't have an official marketing package. But I know they're out there marketing and talking with businesses and, and, uh, other entities to come into the building. But I will, uh, find out if they'll do something.
Was it also possible, could I meet with them?
Absolutely. Anybody can meet with them anytime they want. I mean, they're very open to whatever they want us, whatever they want to do. If you want, I can sit down. I can call Mr. Terrell and give me a call when you're available. We can sit down with him.
Okay. Thank you. I like that. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, council president.
Sure. Councilman Cirillo, too?
Yes, thank you, council president. Just in terms of the completion date, you mentioned, like, maybe beginning to fill a unit in April?
That's just the R over R in the front.
Yeah.
That's the front building. That's not the major warehouse.
Just refresh my memory and maybe we need to, I need to revisit the documents. What's the estimated completion date?
For that building?
Yeah.
The end, the end of 2018, right?
The end of 2018?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd have to check the document because we, we redid the document and I'm not sure what date is in there, to be honest with you. So I don't want to say one date when I really don't know exactly what it is. But I'll check it.
The outside of the whole project was three years, even though they don't anticipate that.
Right.
Three years, three years from last year.
Three years for the entire, for the entire project, right. So, um-
When does the, uh, the, the tax, uh, the tax abatement kick in?
When people start moving in.
Yeah, when people move in.
It's in April, it's in April.
Yeah, it was 2019, I think.
Unit by unit. That's how that works.
Yeah, it's a pro rata.
Yeah.
Oh, pro rata, okay.
But-
Okay, so, so lastly, um, so, uh, there is no degree of urgency right now with respect to the occupancy of the commercial, um, yeah. We shouldn't worry about whether or not they're gonna fill those stores.
I don't think you should worry at all. This is probably not moving. This is not a, this project doesn't, in all the years I've been doing this-
The construction moves slower times.
It's the construction that moves slow. Once the construction's over-
But there's activity and it's not insignificant activity.
I just don't want us to have that impression if that's not the case.
No, I don't, I don't find that-
If we're within the timeframe.
Look, look, a, an easy project usually takes 18 months. So, this is not an easy project. So they've got, I actually don't think it's gonna take three years, but I think it's an easy two years. So-
And I know you have the experience, Mr. Gross, in South Orange and you've seen some of those redevelopment projects through. Uh, and I'm glad to hear about the Starbucks. I, I hope there's something we can do to try to motivate interest, uh, from the corporation.
We've been trying to do that for a while with Starbucks.
Yeah.
We just can't find the right location for them. But from what I had heard, and I don't know it for a fact, I'm hearing that they're, they may even have the Starbucks in, signed up. So I'm, I'm gonna try and find that out. I tried to find it out today, but Mr. Terrell was obviously busy recording that.
Thank you for the time, Mr. Gross.
When, if, if and when you confirm that, would you just send a quick email to the council? Because I'm sure this is gonna be burning up the, uh, the internet, uh, probably already is.
Probably crashing, I trust.
If I could, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, just before, I just wanted to clarify something. Um, I believe that the redevelopment agreement says that the redeveloper does not start paying under the pilot for two years after they obtain the CO. Is that correct?
No, I don't know.
Because that's the, that's the ramp up period where they get the CO, then people can start moving in. And, but they don't have to pay until they, they have up to two years.
It'll probably take two years and then, for, to get, for, as an absorption rate, 333 units to fill up. But my understanding and, and this is, and we've had discussions about this, that this is gonna start as they begin, as they begin to rent, uh, there will be, um, pilot payments before-
Okay. So remember the old agreement, the old redevelopment agreement did give the two-year period from the CO. And I couldn't remember from the new agreement. So I just wanted to clarify that.
My, everything I know about it is-
Okay. I'll, I'll read the documents and, by the next meeting. And I have two hands up. Did you want to respond in that?
I just, to respond to this, because what I recall, when we had the presentation on the financial schedule, that that schedule began in 2019. So it may be what you're saying. I don't really remember it saying two years, but I, it would be two years, um, knowing conjunction with what you're saying. But I do remember the schedule starting at, those payments starting in 2019.
We'll get that clarified for the next meeting. Councilman?
Yeah, I, uh, well, first to what I was gonna say, but I do recall as soon as the, the leases are activated, that's when it would, payments would start and better that we, you know, starting with the commercial, the higher end. Um, but just to reiterate, I know everybody's concerned with the leases, but when we were on site a while ago with Mr. Cohen, uh, Councilwoman McCartney and I, uh, and we were, you know, digging at him to, you know, what kind of, um, commercial retail he was looking for there. Yeah, he, he has a plan. So I, I know we're always having this conversation about who's going to be coming in, but they know who they want and they're gonna ca-, cater, you know, to, to what they want for, for their residents. And I got that message loud and clear and some feedback I'm getting back from some realtors I know in the business that have had conversations with them. Um, I'm getting that read. The rent is gonna be a little higher there and, but they know exactly what they want for their residents. So I think, I think they have it covered. So we'll, we'll see.
Plus they have, I'm sorry. Plus they have a pent-up demand over the past few years of people that have expressed interest. That's the first place. They're gonna go through that first. And they're, they're gonna lose probably 57, 65% of that. Uh, but that of a third will take serious interest in whether they, whether they're able to absorb them or not. But that's where they're gonna go first. They're not gonna spend money on advertising until they, they see where, what happens with the, they're already pent-up demand.
That's why I just wanted to reiterate that comment I mentioned in, in the past. So there isn't concern out there.
Mr. Gross, I know I nag you on this sometimes, but you have some, usually have some very important things to say. So if you could speak a little bit more into the microphone, I'm not sure everybody can, can hear you. Um, Mr. Sayers, I, I saw where Prism became current on their delinquent November taxes. Did you, did you have anything to do with that? Did you send him a nasty letter or anything?
No, I actually placed a phone call. So, uh, they came, uh, actually, when I spoke to, uh, Mr. Diaz, he wasn't aware of, actually, what, what actually happened was part of the taxes were paid, but all of them were not paid. And when I spoke to him, he had them send the checks over.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Uh, liaison, council liaison announcements, speaking of the devil. Anybody'd like to speak, uh, first?
Sure.
Counselor?
Thank you. Thank you, council president, my colleagues. Uh, first of all, just like to say, we had a fantastic West Orange Holiday Open House on this past Saturday. It was great weather, a great turnout, particularly the Breakfast with Santa Claus at Washington School. Over 200, uh, family members came and had breakfast with Santa Claus. Like the, big, a big shout out to Marie De Mayo, the principal of West, of, uh, Washington School for the use and to the Board of Education for the use of the facility. And for, also to Joe Fagan, our town historian, for fantastic historical presentation about the historical makeup and, uh, items and locations and homes and people who, um, made the downtown corridor. And it was fantastic. Uh, as Councilwoman McCartney said too, we had over 350 people riding, uh, the trolley up and down Main Street and we all had a good time. I can speak for my colleagues. I think we all had a good time giving the residents an idea of the history of Main Street and the people and people throughout the township. And, uh, I've gotten numerous emails. I, I know Councilwoman McCartney's gotten emails and, I know my other colleagues, that people are asking questions that are really excited about, uh, the history of West Orange and, and the history of the corridor. Want to also thank the county and the county executive for the use of the trolley. Uh, we appreciate every year the county, uh, gives us the opportunity to use it. And so we hope we get it for many, many more years. Um, and that's, and I said, I just hope more people, you know, come out to the downtown corridor. There's some great businesses. And speaking of some great businesses in the corridor, uh, we have Works, um, City Works, uh, men's clothing store on Main Street, which was just voted one of the top 10 small businesses in Essex County. And we're very happy for Roger and Josephina for them and for their dedication to the downtown corridor. And Susie Cuse was voted one of the top 10 barbecue locations in Essex County. So a big shout out to Susie. Um, and, uh, like I said, please, uh, merchant, come down to our merchants, uh, shop there. Uh, there's a lot of great things between Schneider Hardware and all the other merchants along the Main Street corridor. And, um, hopefully you'll find something you never knew, um, existed before. And I thank all my council colleagues for helping out at the, um, Holiday Open House and for the trolley ride on behalf of the Downtown West Orange Alliance. And also for the great Christmas tree lighting we had. It was a great turnout. So it was a fun-filled day and really brought the community together. And that's what, you know, I know we all like to see, is people coming down and talking instead of being on their phones all day long. So it was nice to see, you know, people actually talking, meeting new people, you know, Santa Claus. And a big shout out to the Public Works Department, the West Orange Fire Department, the West Orange Police Department for their help in making the holiday weekend a great success. And thank you to all and thank you to my colleagues. Thank you, council president.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilwoman?
You wanna go next or?
It's okay.
Yeah, just to, uh, piggyback on, uh, Councilwoman Garino's, uh, comments, but yeah, great, great day, good time. Love the kids, uh, just adorable, nothing like, uh, the Holiday Bazaar. I like the way we did it this year with Joe Fagan, Joe Fagan doing a little presentation, um, educating, um, the, the trolley riders, made our jobs easier because we could just quiz people instead of remember all the facts that, you know, you can never keep up with Joe Fagan, there's just so many facts and he's such a, uh, such a treasure of knowledge for us. But it, it worked out really nice. Uh, the library had Build-A-Bears, they were a big hit. So a lot more activities, uh, the breakfast, again, we did that years ago at Lady of the Lord's School, um, the town did, and I'm glad Meg brought that back. But Megan Brill, really, you know, great effort by her and the whole downtown, uh, committee. And the Recreation Department, phenomenal job last Saturday night with all, uh, wreck and fire, so thank you. And Unique Performance Dance, uh, Company had performed and Roosevelt Middle School was on hand to entertain everyone. Um, next Thursday, the fourteenth, we will have our menorah lighting, uh, right here in town, in front of Town Hall at four PM. So, um, we will have that for residents, another night of celebration. And, uh, Councilman, you have the other holiday, uh, flyer that you could share with the residents. Uh, this also passed weekend, West Orange Arts Council had a Holiday Bazaar, um, great handcrafted items, um, great shopping, great opportunities for, to shop local, even last Saturday after Thanksgiving, shopping down on Main Street. So just remember our local businesses here in the township, there's so many great, uh, businesses, not only just in the downtown corridor, but throughout the, the township, so just try to remember them. I know, I appreciate not standing in those long lines in the mall, a lot nicer coming, uh, to our local shops. Uh, also on Thursday, uh, the fourteenth, we have a public relations meeting at six PM down here in, um, sorry, in the, uh, conference room down the hallway here at six PM on the fourteenth, uh, open to the public, so if you want to get involved, uh, please do so. And my last announcement is, oh wait, we have Toys for Tots on Thursday night, December seventh, and our P.E. cheerleaders that were here earlier with some of the other pal cheerleaders be on hand to perform that evening. Uh, but you could bring Toys for Tot Thursday night, uh, Ron Charles, uh, on the school board, works with St. Jude and has this really nice, uh, event, um, at, um, what's it, four sixty?
Four sixty-six.
Four sixty-six on Prospect Avenue, so that's six PM this Thursday night at seven o'clock. And that is it. I'm looking forward to, um, January, probably February first, we'll have the senior citizen survey, uh, results back, where we're going to bring Montclair State in. Uh, over a hun- eight hundred residents have participated in the study, which we're really excited about. And, uh, thank you to the Health Department and many of our residents, Rosary, you're, you're here out peddling the, peddling our, uh, survey and we appreciate that. Also, Josie Velez worked really hard and so many of you residents out there getting the word out about it. So we're looking forward to the information and we'll have a full report, uh, that we'll look forward to in, in the next, uh, meeting or two. Council President, I'm done.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Sure. Council President, the Degnan House, uh, is, uh, is currently, uh, being, uh, it's, it's, it's planning, uh, to get, uh, the site ready for an inspection by HUD. Uh, there was an article that we had spoken about. And since then, um, the property manager, Debbie Solenotti, has procured the services or will be procuring the services of a professional inspector to come in and, and, and take a look at the facility and make sure that, uh, you know, whatever, uh, fi- um, physical scores, uh, came out the, the past, uh, this past year is not repeated. So, uh, just want to give credit to the board for being proactive and making sure that, uh, you know, that situation doesn't repeat itself. So that's the report for the Degnan House. Uh, as it relates to the West Orange Hispanic Foundation, uh, Council President, there's a toy drive that's going on. Uh, if anybody has, uh, toys that they wish to donate, uh, the toys can be donated to, um, the restaurant, uh, Fagón Latino, uh, forty-one Washington Street, forty-one Washington Street, until Friday, August fifteenth, uh, unwrapped toys, which-
December fifteenth or August fifteenth?
December fifteenth.
Okay.
Sorry. Uh, December fifteenth, I'm sorry, we're under the weather and I don't know why I wrote August fifteenth.
Because it feels like it's August fifteenth.
So, uh, not, um, August, but, uh, on December seventeenth at three PM, there's going to be a toy giveaway, Council President, at Holy Trinity Church. Uh, this is, uh, for the, uh, children in the neighborhood. Uh, any toys that are collected will be distributed on that date. And again, that's on behalf of the West Orange Hispanic Foundation. Uh, and lastly, with this being, um, the last meeting of the year, I just want to wish, uh, the, the public, you know, all of our, uh, partners to come in and provide us, uh, feedback. A warm and wonderful holiday season to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Just a, just a quick clarification, the toys for the toy drive, I, I am assuming new would be great, but are they also accepting gently used?
Uh, we'll take them.
Okay. Okay. Do they need to be wrapped or unwrapped?
Unwrapped, we'll take care of that.
Unwrapped, okay.
That's, again, that's until December fifteenth.
Okay.
Okay, so contact either myself or you can get in touch with Deputy Mayor Adolfo Rodriguez. Uh, that is the, his restaurant.
Yep.
Again, Fagón Latino, uh, on forty, at forty-one Washington Street.
Sounds good, thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you. It is a busy time of year. Busy time of year. The mayor's program for individuals with special needs for having their holiday party on Sunday, December seventeenth, from four to seven, at the Toby Katz Fieldhouse. But welcome to attend. Um, and visit the West Orange Recreation Department for a lot of upcoming things. You, as you saw today, so many things happening in recreation. Uh, West Orange Chamber of Commerce saved the date for January thirty-first for the annual State of the Town Address given by the Mayor Parisi. This will be held at the Wilshire Grand on Wednesday, January thirty-first, from eight to nine-thirty. Tickets are thirty-five dollars. Uh, they'll be available here in the mayor's office and also at westorangechamber.com. Uh, everyone is invited to attend. And, um, the cha- the West Orange Chamber of Commerce also puts out a chamber directory. So if anybody would like to, um, submit content for the directory or advertise in the directory, um, please send information to, again, westorangechamber.com. Um, that gets mailed townwide. Um, thank you for the Holiday Open House, just really was an outstanding and, and also to all the volunteers, not only Recreation and Public Works and Police and Fire, but we had volunteers from the Girl Scouts, we had the Junior ROTC volunteers, um, the cadets did an outstanding job in preparation, uh, preparing the site and also in cleanup committee. So, great, uh, young batch of students. And if you recall, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, two thou- actually, two thousand and fifteen, this was with the West Orange Environmental Commission, we introduced Litter of Light, I'm spelling it L-I-T-E-R, where the founder, Elac Diaz, uh, discovered that if you fill a liter bottle with water and a little bit of bleach, it would provide five hours of solar energy, he u- solar light. He used it in the Philippines when the country was devastated without, from the typhoon, uh, with no electricity. They came and gave that presentation to the Environmental Commission at the Thomas Edison National Historic Park during one of our Earth Hour events back in two thousand and fifteen. And it was, no pun intended, but the light bulb went off that after five hours, you need nightlight. So right after that, um, the members of the Environmental Commission, high school and, um, Downtown Alliance met with Evco Mechanical, quiet little company on Standish Avenue, been there, mechanical company, been there, um, many, many years. Um, and you're sitting in a room of MIT engineers and they build us a prototype of a nightlight. I gave that to the high school students, the director, the supervisor of the Sustainable Engineering and Technology Course at the high school. He wrote a curriculum that would help build this solar circuit and it went on to be a national, um, national recognition. Litter of Light is right now on a world tour and we just got word from them that they don't want to head back home to the Philippines until, uh, they stop here in West Orange.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so they're bringing a lot of supplies with them, this, this will be at the high school. I'm just throwing this out there because I understand they're bringing hu- five hundred circuits. Um, two-thirty on Monday, December eleventh, um, if you'd like to build a solar LED circuit, um, you can join us at the high school in room twelve-twenty-six. I'm just very excited and it just literally put West Orange on the map with a national curriculum that was recognized back in May and, um, and just this program and the great work that's being done at the high school. The Environmental Commission also launched a campaign for Field Goods, F-I-E-L-D, Field Goods, which, um, is sixty, a collaboration of sixty sustainable farms in our area where you can have fresh produce delivered. Uh, right here in town, we have three sites, First Mountain Preschool, Metropolitan Plan Exchange, and the library is on board now. Uh, that's three so far, so we're looking for more sites. But it's an online, you order yourself, you can either, um, accept what they're offering for that week or build your own bag. It's very reasonable and it gets delivered to one of those sites. So fieldgoods.com, check it out. Um, and many of you are here, know that the Planning Board meeting is tomorrow evening, twelve-six. This, we have, uh, courtesy hearing from the county. The county is looking to renovate the existing entrance and also the renovations to the Leopard exhibit. Uh, we also have a presentation that was carried from the November first meeting on the preliminary investigation report proposing the non-common condemnation area needed redevelopment at Essex Green. And there is another recommendation to the council that will be presented about the Eagle Rock commercial area that we discussed, uh, a long time ago. So that's for the agenda December sixth. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, very quickly, uh, want to invite everyone to consider attending the Nineteenth Annual Kwanzaa Celebration. It's going to be Friday, December twenty-ninth, from five-thirty to nine o'clock at the Washington Elementary School in the gymnasium, two eighty-nine Main Street. There will be refreshments, music, African dancing and vendors, it's free admission. If you've never gone before, you're, you would be amazed at how entertaining, uh, the evening is and, uh, would really just invite everyone to come. It's, uh, Friday, December twenty-ninth, five-thirty to nine, at Washington Elementary School. Just two quick follow-ups to, uh, what Councilman Garino was saying about the, the trolley tours. Two very interesting things happened, at least I thought they were interesting. Uh, I did a couple of the tours with my wife. Uh, my wife was born and raised here and is, knows a lot about architecture, so she comes and helps out on the, on the tours. The first thing, and on our first tour, uh, I looked up, because somebody called my name inside the bus, and it was Michelle Martin, who is a trustee or a director at the Friends of the West Orange Public Library. She had just gotten married the week before and apparently they took time out of their honeymoon to come on, on the trolley tour. So I thought that was funny, so I announced it to everybody and they got a big round of applause and I don't think she's ever going to talk to me again.
She told me she wasn't.
So, and then on the next tour, it was very interesting because, uh, my wife, when she was born, when Claire was born, she lived at, I believe it's one thirty-nine Main Street. It's one of the, it's the row of buildings just, uh, south of the Edison site. And it's, uh, it's a row of build, a row of residences, usually two, some, three family that, uh, I think Edison bought for his workers. And her family lived in the, the, one of the two families, I think it's at one thirty-nine. So she announced that as we're driving by and there's a woman, I swear, sitting in the front seat of the bus, said, "That's where I live." So that was just really, that was just really funny.
Yeah.
Uh, anyway, I, I know the meeting's running long, but I just thought those two things would be kind of interesting. Anyway, I think that's, uh, is that it? For the conference agenda? So we can now move to the public, uh, agenda? Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter Two Thirty-One, Public Law nineteen-seventy-five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December eighth, two thousand and sixteen. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Garino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Krkowiak?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
At the start of our agenda is public comment. For those of you who haven't done this before, if you'd like to come and speak, uh, you will have five minutes. Please raise your hand, be recognized by the chair. One of the things I've been trying to do to speed up the meeting is to, once you're recognized by the chair, please come down in the first row or two so we can reduce the amount of time between speakers. Uh, you have five minutes, you can say anything, uh, stay within general bounds of civility and, uh, five minutes. Typically what the council does is, in, in administrations, we wait till everybody speaks and then responds if there are any specific questions or any comments that they want to make. So would there like to be anyone, uh, who speaks a public comment tonight? I see Ms. Morelli at the back, please, would you start us off? I see Mr. Ms. Malanga, if you'll just come on down, I see Mr. Daniel. I just found out it was Dr. Daniel, right?
Yes.
See, I do read your emails. Is there anyone else besides these four that I've selected, does anybody else like to speak? We've got our county representative here too. You usually want to wait till last, say the best to last, okay.
Maybe he should come up first, he sits through all this stuff, torture. You want to come up here, Anthony?
Thank you, Ms. Morelli.
He does like to go last.
You might go last?
Yes.
Yeah, he's told me that he really wants to wait until he hears what you have to say. So please.
He's got to be interested. Anyway, what I'd like to say is, uh, you did an outstanding job, Mr. Krkowiak. Uh, one thing I watched was you followed parliamentary procedure, you followed Robert's Rules of Order and also the ordinance of the council. Hopefully that will continue. You did an outstanding job, thank you. Uh, tonight I'm going to talk about two issues. One, senior citizens and tax abatements. Now, tonight's agenda, Resolution Two-Four-Six-Dash-Seventeen, the Essex County Department on Aging Contract for Funding for a Visiting Nurse, which is a service provided by the Township Health Department. I wasn't aware that this program was still in place. Apparently it isn't too well-publicized, but objective number eight in the resolution states, quote, "To revote, review the results and report from the senior citizen survey to determine unmet needs," end quote. Which hopefully will rectify the problem going forward. And for those of you who might not be aware, last August, I was appointed to be a member of the Essex County, excuse me, Commission on Aging by our county executive, Joseph DiVincenzo, and I was approved by the County Board of Chosen Freeholders. And one of my first objectives is to make the senior citizens of our township aware of all the senior services that are available. Um, I'm, tomorrow I'm picking up from the county forty copies of this publication. It's the Essex County Division of Senior Services and the Aging and Disability Resource Connection Programs and Service Guide. It's an excellent, comprehensive program. I'll give some to you, Karen, and I will also give them some to Andy Duffy. And I will, yeah, I will keep getting them and bringing them in. Um, I don't know if anybody's ever seen this, county newspaper.
It's nice.
Doesn't get distributed, gets here and we lose it, I don't know where it goes. So you'll get more of those. The next thing I want to talk about is the usage of redevelopment and rehabilitation tax abatements by New Jersey municipalities. I've got another report. This one is a programmatic examination of municipal tax abatements. And this, uh, is a report that reviews the usage of redevelopment and rehabilitation tax abatements. The review was submitted to Governor Christie, Stephen Sweeney, President of the Senate, and Sheila Oliver, the Speaker of the Assembly, on August eighteenth, two thousand and ten. The review was done by then-state controller, A. Matthew Boxer, who was a very talented young man. Exceptional, really exceptional. Now, the executive summary and the entire report are too lengthy to read here tonight. I haven't got too much time left, but you can find this on the, uh, state web shot, website. It's an absolute have-to-read. Uh, just something from the executive summary. "Our review of tax abatement practices in New Jersey found numerous weaknesses in the regulation, implementation, and oversight of these programs, including: payments to municipalities by business and developers and move taxes, known as pilot payments, distort municipal incentives in using and structuring abatements at the expense of coun- of counties, school districts, and other taxpayers. Information concerning statement agreements, abatement agreements, is not published in a transparent manner." a transparent manner or centralized location, making it difficult to impossible for the public to compare, to calculate the effect of, or be fully aware of these agreements. Many of the municipal criteria and processes used in evaluating potential abatement agreements are weak. This is a good one. Municipal follow-up on abatement terms and benefits generally is lacking, impeding accountability and feedback. Who better fits this than Prism? Another thing, and I hate to go there, but cronyism may emerge in the approval process of the long-term abatements, further compounding these inequities. Cronyism provides unfair advantages to favored developers, and in the process can lead to less beneficial terms for the municipality and other affected parties. Historical evidence of corruption of the redevelopment process in New Jersey confirms that this threat is real in the long-term abatement context.
Your time is up.
Please, if you could, Ms. Morelli, finish up.
I have just one more to read, please.
Yes, please.
Significant use, these are where abatements are used continually. Significant use of development abatements, Asbury Park, these are the townships that the municipalities take advantage of this. Asbury Park, Atlantic City, Bayonne, Bridgeton, Camden, Harrison, Hoboken, Jersey City, Long Branch, New Brunswick, Bound Brook, Vineland, Trenton.
Thank you, Ms. Morelli.
My next point, just one little point. My next point is...
Ten seconds, please.
These are too long to go into, but my opinion, because as a suburban municipality, two problems could exist in West Orange. One is property maintenance ordinance is not being enforced, and properties are falling into disrepair, or the properties being identified as qualifying in need of redevelopment actually aren't. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morelli. Ms. Malanga, would you like to go next?
Good to see you all. Tomorrow evening...
Can you state your name and address?
Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road.
Thank you.
Tomorrow, citizens will return to the planning board hearing on the Essex Green and Executive Drive proposals, as well as the Eagle Rock and Prospect Avenue, consisting over a dozen properties, all attempting to be made into areas in need of redevelopment by the township administration. This is a massive real estate scheme which lacks a foundation in law or even credibility. At the prior planning board hearing on this matter, members of the board had very few questions for the planner, while the public had dozens of questions and comments. It appears that the planning board itself does not have proper guidance, and that they are even being told not to concern themselves with tax subsidies. If the planning board members vote yes tomorrow, it will be a misuse of the well-intentioned law meant to cure blighted areas, and will open up tax abatements to property owners. These are lower taxes that would not be offered to the rest of the community. I also want to mention the time and effort this ill-advised proposal is eating up of good citizens in researching and publicizing to the community what we can all plainly see, that the properties are dated and nothing more. I also want to share that it's gaining bad publicity among the taxpayers that West Orange has so many properties that are trying to be declared areas in need of redevelopment that are not blighted, but of course, the implication is, they might be blighted, but they're really not. It's very confusing. It's instigating irritation about our taxes and keeping us from attending to the positive things we want to do in our town, and the good publicity we want to achieve. So it will be up to this body, it will be up to you, to stop it, and I would like you to stop it as soon as you are able. I think it would be great if all of you came to the planning board meeting tomorrow, so you can experience what the public has to experience in having to defend against this obvious tax subsidy plan for big business. And the only reason to declare these properties as an area in need of redevelopment is to open up tax subsidies. There's no other reason for it, and I think we have to keep reminding ourselves of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Malanga. Mr. Malanga? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public comment? Please raise your hand and be recognized. After Mr. Dan, Dr. Dan.
Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road. Council President, may I distribute a New Jersey Supreme Court decision to the members of the council?
You're more than welcome to. Yes, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you just stop the clock, please? Please. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Council President, thank you for your service here as council president. It's been an outstanding year, and we are very grateful, and congratulations to Councilwoman McCartney. We look forward to working with you over the next year as well. At the last council meeting, I made public comment with respect to the proposal that the Essex Green and Executive Drive areas be declared areas in need of redevelopment, and I was opposed to that designation, and I indicated that it's because the areas are not blighted. And Councilwoman McCartney took exception to my use of the word "blight," which is why I've provided this Supreme Court decision to the council, in which the word "blight" is used 266 times. And this Supreme Court decision affirms the idea that areas in need of redevelopment are blighted. You can use the term interchangeably. And the only reason why the term "blight" is not used more than once within the statute is because blight was considered a pejorative. It had certain connotations that the legislature was seeking to avoid. So the terminology has been changed. Nevertheless, the criteria for determining an area in need of redevelopment, they all remain the same as when this was called the Blighted Areas Act. So I think that should the proposals move from the planning board to the council, you have to consider, members of the council, whether you view Essex Green and Executive Drive as blighted. Don't be deceived by the nomenclature. Simply because we're calling it areas in need of redevelopment doesn't mean that they're areas in need of a facelift, or that they're areas in need of a paint job, or areas in need of an updating, or areas in need of a Starbucks. It's really blight. You're looking at whether there's broken windows, whether there's gang activity, whether there's a likelihood that this blighted area is hurting the community in terms of safety. I urge you to read this case, I've highlighted certain sections of it, and you can see that the Supreme Court is clear, mentioning it 260 times, the word "blight." That's what you have to find in order to declare an area in need of redevelopment. And one final request that I have, is we've heard many updates on the schedule of the downtown redevelopment project. Could we get a schedule in writing? I've yet to be involved in a construction project, and I have been involved in many of them, where there hasn't been a written schedule, a critical path method, a percentage of completion schedule. All of this should be provided to the township council, and in turn, provided to the public, so we can truly see where we stand. We need to know exactly what's taking place, and it's nice to be told it's moving along positively, that things are going to be rented out in April. That's great, but let's see a schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Dr. Daniel?
Hi. My name is Robert Daniel, and I'm from 2B Buckingham Road. So first of all, this is a milestone meeting, we're closing out 2017, soon 2018 is upon us. Thank you for this opportunity, again, to express my thoughts on multiple issues. Again, I am deeply distressed that our town council approved a process that will ultimately lead, probably, possibly, to granting of tax abatements towards redevelopment of the most highly valuable property in our township, Essex Green Shopping Mall and the Executive Drive Office Building. So those, back in September, that was a poorly informed decision. Hopefully, you folks will have time. You've heard us, you've heard what's going on at the planning board, and those cannot be followed by more bad decisions. If there is a problem with public works in animal control downtown, that's in the footprint of Phase 2, then let's figure out a solution, either taking that property out of Phase 2, or find some other property. The solution should not be driving what's happening at Essex Green and Executive Drive. Nonetheless, we, people here in this room, we understand that there is going to be redevelopment at Essex Green, and that it'll be happening by the new owners. Clarion, and what I understand is Legg Mason, who owns Clarion, they can and should provide, they should proceed without any support from us taxpayers. They don't need any rebates, or pilots, or anything from us. And as our representatives, I hope that you're aware of the fundamental inequity of tax-abated properties. To the rest of us folks here in West Orange, who a few of us are sitting here in the audience today, and I just want to follow up on what Rosary tried to read to you. It's really important that you read what the former Controller General of our state, Matthew Boxer, wrote. He wrote a really important report about tax-abated properties in the state. It's really important that each one of you read, as our township moves forward in this process. And that's what Rosary, and I think we'll probably be sending that out to all of you to make sure that you get it. Second issue, we appear, I'm now shifting, we're done with Essex Green. We appear to have a lack, and this is administration, Mr. Sayers, a lack of effective control on our zoning, building, and enforcement department at the far western corner of our township. I'm specifically talking about Laurel and Eagle Rock Avenue. Their permits are being issued, and occupancy is happening in a particular home there, without regard for the conditions that were set forth by the zoning board and the planning board. More about this in the future, not within my two minutes that are left. Topic number three, there is a PNC Bank on Northfield Avenue that managed to do a complete sidewalk parking lot reconstruction without a permit, without any regard for all of the policies that were set, policies, resolutions, and procedures of our township, everything that's written, they just flew under the radar until one of our citizens here became aware and alerted the authorities that, in fact, this was going on. The ordinance number 20-30.1 of our township, everybody who can take notes, says that every property owner is supposed to have sidewalks on their property. Somehow, PNC Bank out of Pittsburgh managed to fly under the radar. And topic number four, closing out, just an FYI, the forester's contract, from what I understand, will be ending on December 31st. He works for us, from what I could gather, one day a week, for a few hours. We strongly urge that this contract be renewed in 2018 on a month-to-month basis. I assume this will be coming up in a future, probably in January, when Susan is running the council, that that only be renewed, and Mr. Sayers, I'm talking to you, you know how this is brought to the council, on a month-to-month basis, not on an annual contract, and that our township possibly explore an alternative source for these services, perhaps a joint services agreement with a neighboring town or city that has the same type of forester, perhaps South Orange, Maplewood, Orange, or Livingston, and we could share the services of a forester who would be available five days a week, but on an hourly basis as needed. So I just wanted to thank you for your time, and wish you a good new year and a good holiday season, and thank you for listening and your patience, with 19 seconds left.
Perhaps you're imagining sitting up here one day? Certainly, you can come after, that's fine. Mr. Dorf? After, after, he's already up here, if you're okay with that, Mr. Pagliisi.
I'll be very brief, so.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So Anthony Pagliisi, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo, just want to remind everyone, this holiday season, with the Holiday Light Spectacular at Turtleback Zoo, we do encourage you to bring a non-perishable food item, gently-worn winter coat, or a new toy that will be donated to organizations that help less fortunate people. And then also, this month, it also is our gingerbread contest at the Environmental Center that runs until December 15th. So if you have an opportunity, I always get hungry when I see those houses, but you have to look and not touch, so, but I invite you to come out and see that as well. And then if you visit our website at essexcountyNJ.org, there's a whole lot of other events and activities that are going on. I just also want to congratulate Council President Krokowiac on 2017, and wish good luck to Councilwoman McCartney on 2018.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Before he leaves, may I ask him a question before he leaves?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. And while you're here, that, there was a comment, Rosary Morelli just made a comment about a county newsletter. That is not something that we see regularly, is that something that you can provide to us or send to us?
I believe that's the Essex Advisor. I know that's distributed through our senior services office, I would just have to find out how they distribute that.
Okay. Could you put us on that list, so that we can get it here? Okay. Just a comment about the gingerbread houses, what's interesting about that is that they have to be, they have to have at least five or seven sustainable features built into the structure of their house, so very, very creative exhibit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pagliisi. Mr. Dorf? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please raise your hand. We're getting to the end, so speak or forever hold your peace until the next council meeting in January.
My name is Louis Dorf, I live at 4 Hepworth Court in West Orange. I just wanted to clauer, I just wanted to try to educate some of the people here who have made inquiries about the absence or the need for a marketing document relative to, I know they were asking about a marketing document relative to the retail space and commercial space at the Edison Village, but people are also obviously interested in the marketing status of Essex Green, and I just wanted to make what I think is an important point. There's a company called Ripco Real Estate. Ripco is a very large and successful, predominantly retail broker, retail space broker, with a large presence in New Jersey, as well as in New York, and the other, and other areas of the tri-state region. And in the marketing document, which exists online, which can be easily accessed by going to ripconj.com, there is a, there's an entire area that discusses the, under new developments or under development, under the development heading, for the Essex Green development, with a large hypothetical rendering, artists rendering, showing what the potential Essex Green redesign could look like. I realize this is completely hypothetical, but there, just be aware that this document has been available to the public and to real estate brokers who are involved in bringing prospective tenants to Ripco, and obviously, specifically to inhabit ultimately the vacant space, some of the vacant space at Essex Green. And there's a large red banner across the left-hand corner, upper-left-hand corner of this, of this large rendering, that says, "Under New Ownership, Planned Redevelopment." So my question is just that, if this document has been out and available to the people in the professional real estate community, which I'm part of, and to the general public, and to obviously people who are involved with the municipalities that host these developments, and you are... the planning board, how is it that there's a published document that's at least six months old, published by the exclusive leasing agents for Clarion, and I guess Legg Mason, if Legg Mason in fact is the parent or co-funder of the Essex Green project? How is it that six months ago, there's a document that exists online that says, "New redevelopment," that, you know, that says redevelopment, when everybody in this room, for weeks on end, has been asking the questions about why is redevelopment being proposed, promoted? Why are we spending so much money on redevelopment when it's already showing as a, essentially a fait accompli on this large, very expensive, public access document? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dorf. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public comment? Please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, I'm going to close public comment and ask any of my colleagues if they'd like to respond.
Just going down the list, starting with Rosary Morelli, just to commend her for her advocacy on the aging in place. And you introduced us to Matthew Boxer. I know I have so many documents that I've saved from him, so thank you, thank you for that. And I guess it goes along that I would respectfully disagree with the 2010 document that you did present, because so many other municipalities in the state of New Jersey have undergone that, not just the municipalities that you mentioned, or the cities that you mentioned in there. Mrs. Sally Melanga asked about why the planning board didn't ask any questions. We did not discuss. We heard the presentation, and discussions and deliberations are being carried till tomorrow, so that's why, no questions, we ran out of time, and that's why questions are, deliberation is tomorrow evening. Kevin, I guess I did take offense to the blight. I don't know that I took offense to it, but I know I was quoted in paper as saying that blight was not mentioned in this report, and it's not, because what our introduction says is that under the regulation of the local redevelopment and housing law, state statute delineated area may be determined in need of redevelopment if, after investigation, no dissent hearing as provided in Section 8 of the public law. Governing body of the municipality by resolution concludes that within the delineated area, any of these eight provisions could meet the criteria to designate a property in need of redevelopment. Blight it would be the most obvious, but that's not in this public law 1992. And what we did hear in our presentation in November fir, on November 1st, was that the criteria that was listed in this document, that that particular site met the criteria in provision B and D, the discontinuance of use of the buildings and areas with buildings improvement with an obsolete layout. Which kind of leads me into what Louis was talking about with this hypothetical sketch that's out there. It is hypothetical, I don't know why it's listed as an area in need of redevelopment, I can't, or even just redevelopment, I can't answer that question, but does it even talk about zoning? Because there are only two zones up there right now, PC, which is for planned commercial, and OB for office use. So, you know, really if this, what the planning board is looking to do is just give an overlay on this to see what the marketing trends are, what would move up there, what could improve the site. That's what we're looking at. Comments were made about financial, that is not discussed, as everyone heard at the planning board meeting, the chairman, we really just discussed municipal land use, we don't discuss any of the implications of the financial structures. I did want to mention though, that I was at a meeting this morning with Governor Cody and his staff, Senator J.C., and conversation came up about pilot programs and tax incentives, and we did hear that Jersey City just adopted an ordinance on the structure of their pilots, and what should be included in that, if we should go in that direction. I did ask the clerk to see if she can get a hand on that ordinance. We haven't been able to find it yet, but we'll track it down just to see. But in no way would we ever shortchange the taxpayer. We just wouldn't. So I'm sorry that this has spun. We'll see tomorrow after the discussion and deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else? Councilwoman?
So that's why I voted for Councilwoman McCartney to be on the planning board. Now seriously though, I did attend the last, last meeting, and listened to Mr. Greigl's presentation, and he did have that debate with you, Ms. Melanga, in regards to blight it because of the new interpretations of the law. I look forward to going tomorrow night and hear more of the comments, but again, we're not, we're not there yet, we're taking baby steps. I hear, hear you, hear all of you, and thank you for coming down tonight. I have to tell you, I have past week or two, well not, I was away for a little bit, but I, I've been, a lot of commercial real estate closings up in Hackensack, I'm a title closer for a title company, and have various conversations on redevelopment, especially in that area, Main Street in Hackensack is really getting developed, up in Teaneck, a lot of Bergen County. Read a long article, talked to people from the League of Municipalities, and yeah, it's a real estate tool. I mean, plain and simple, you know, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, it's a real estate tool. So I guess the approach I'm having is I'm going to see where the planning board goes with this, but you know, I have to see what the benefit is to the town, and if it will be harmful to the town. I know one thing we haven't talked about, I know folks are concerned about tax abatements, but you know, we lost, we lost tax appeals to those properties. And so, you know, the property isn't as lucrative as it once was, and again, it's just the trend. It's nothing anybody's doing, or there isn't this big conspiracy, but unfortunately, the office complexes, that is the trend, you know, they're, they're emptying out. Up in Roseland, there was a big firm, the building is empty, it's just the trend, folks are going back to Newark, Jersey City, all those towns that are, were just mentioned by Ms. Morelli, taking whatever advantage, or whatever there may be, are just utilizing the tool, but we have to be careful, we have to look at the numbers, which haven't been presented to us yet. And you know, so we just, you know, we have to rely on Mr. Gross to do the math for us in the administration, and see where the planning board goes, and take it from there. But it's, it's only if it's a benefit to the township that I would be supportive of it, but it is a real estate tool that is out there, not just West Orange, but to many municipalities in the state of New Jersey. You know, the developers, there was a conversation when the last meeting, someone that was here, or the planning board meeting, about, you know, this is why they come, well, yeah, this is why they come and develop in our township. They know we're good partners with redevelopment, and you know, that could also be a good thing. It doesn't have to be a negative, it could be a good. So we, let's see what the benefit is, if it's, if it's a benefit, it's a benefit, if it's not, then you know, that's another discussion. But I'll be there tomorrow night, I'll be listening, and we'll see what Mr. Greigl and the planning board has in store for us tomorrow night. But I just, just, you know, beware, it's not that it's blighted properties, it's properties in need, and obsolete. So, yes. Okay. As far as Ms. Morelli, before, you know, thank you for what you're doing, and congratulations again on your position. We look forward, I know when the survey comes back, communication, I won't be surprised if that's a big part of what we need to get out there with information. I've been talking to even our PR commission to see what we could do to get some information out there regards to programming, and Mr. Paglis, is he gone? Oh, there he is, back there. I look forward to all the holiday celebration that the county provides, you know, we've done a lot in the township here, but it's nice to be complimented with all the activities and for folks, if you get your card from the county in the mail, try to go out to some of their, to the zoo, or to the historic sites that they have, it's, it really is delightful this time of year. And Council President, I get a chance to mention Mr. Feigowitz, it's gone, but I did want to give him kudos. For a year, he served as an architect for the school district, and I had the pleasure of working with him on many occasions. He has designed Liberty Middle School, and he just joked to me, maybe in 50 years or so, it could be a historic landmark down the road, but seriously, I even noted on the tour, we're very lucky here in the township to have schools with such rich historic and architectural design, and thanks to his work through the years, he really helped to preserve, helped the school district to preserve the integrity of those buildings. So again, I'm looking forward to tomorrow night at the planning board, and just getting the information that we'll need from the administration to make a valid decision, if it comes our way. Council President?
Thank you. Councilwoman Sarillo, I think you got your hand up next.
Thank you, Council President. I first want to start off with the PNC question. Do we know any details about that, a PNC Bank, and whether or not they bypassed the permitting process?
No, I do not, but I will check that tomorrow.
Okay. If it's a, if it's a, I mean, I, if it's a rehab of an existing structure, and that is not really affecting electrical lines or plumbing, you may not need a plumbing, I'm sorry, you may not need a permit. Again, I'm a little bit.
You're working too hard, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I am. But if it's, you know, but if some of the utilities were affected, I'm sure that a permit was necessary, so I would like to hear about what happened there. As it relates to the redevelopment, Dr. Daniel, I don't, I disagree with the point about the, not being, that the fact that we voted on pursuing a study as being, not a necessity. I believe in municipalities being proactive in assuring that, I believe you're a planner, urban planner, I believe in municipalities being proactive in assuring that market conditions, housing conditions don't deteriorate to the point that they affect the entire municipality as a whole. So the council at that time, at least in my estimation, did not make any commitments to any tax abatements, any designation, but rather just gave the green light to assess, which is where we are right now. The planning board has before them this initial assessment. They'll be voting on that assessment tomorrow, on whether or not the office park in the commercial complex meets that designation under the law. Now, those designations exist for the purposes of assuring that municipalities have a tool to safeguard against blighted areas, you know, for lack of a better term, or certain conditions, that making sure that they do not affect the municipality as a whole. So where we are right now is, we are assessing whether or not those partials in that area can potentially impact the municipality as a whole. I'm a taxpayer, live right down the street, some of you guys live down the street, others live the other side, but should deteriorating conditions be allowed to move forward, it can have a potential impact. Now, the question on whether or not it meets those criteria, that criteria under the law, it's going, is going to be assessed tomorrow, and eventually it will come to the town council. Now, if approved tomorrow, and it comes before the town council, we need to assure that, that those findings really have some solid factual proof behind them, before we really make a determination, as opposed to just saying that, hey, you know, because of the, you know, the walkways, or the geography, or, you know, we have to make, we have to assure that whatever, whatever decision is made is really backed by some facts, some solid facts. Because personally, personally, I have a suspicion that market conditions may have some, like global and national trends may have something to do with the condition of that area. The office parks are becoming obsolete. Office parks were big in the 70s and early 80s. As it relates to the mall concept, that is also becoming obsolete because of online shopping. So we are at a point where like, I guess as a municipality, we may, we are assessing whether or not that trend that will continue can be detrimental to our municipality, and we have to be proactive, and I think we are being proactive in considering the tools that exist. So to summarize, what I'm saying is, there is validity to us doing that assessment, whether or not it meets that criteria, we have to carefully, carefully watch that. Keep in mind also that on a global and on a national scale, office parks and commercial, commercial establishments such as malls are going by the wayside, the markets are changing out there. So we have to decide whether or not, you know, as a council, as a municipality, we are willing to exercise that tool. The tool, the tool of, the tool of area in need of redevelopment can be used to rezone, and can also be used for the extension of tax abatements, and we feel that the necessity is there, as a whole, for the municipality. Those decisions haven't been made. So I just ask that, you know, we all take a step back, allow the process to take its course, but when it comes here, just keep that in mind, keep market conditions in mind, and also keep, keep in mind that, you know, we have to carefully safeguard the treasury. It can have potential financial impacts, loss of, of commercial ratables. Instead, we would have a set formula. And going back to that Matt Boxer issue, and Ms. Morelli has brought this up before, going back to that Matt Boxer study, what's ironic is that the municipalities that she mentioned, they're municipalities that were considered a one-point Abbott School Districts, right? And Abbott School Districts are substantially funded, with respect to education, substantially funded by the state of New Jersey, which means us, okay? So if you go to Anasbury Park, you go to a Jersey City, you go to Hoboken, you know, perhaps the, this tool of redevelopment tool and these tax abatements were overly used and possibly misused, because, look, we're paying for the school system, right? And under that tool, under, under tax abatements, the tax abatement law doesn't require us to pay for the schools. So if you go to an urban area that's, that's an Abbott School Districts, it's an advantage for them to overly exercise that tool, because we're paying for the schools, and all those extra children that come in as a result of development. So I don't, my point is, I don't disagree with you that, that the, that report is accurate, but we have to keep in mind that the municipalities that you mentioned, and the areas where there was, there is possibly elements of abuse, are all urban areas, okay? Not suburban areas. We're a little bit more careful, because we have to pay, we're paying a large portion of, you know, for education, so when you ask, how many students is this, is this creating, it's an important element. In Hoboken, you don't have to worry about that. In Jersey City, you don't have to worry about that, because we're paying for those extra children, okay? So make sure we, we have to make sure that we understand that distinction, you know, urban versus suburban with respect to the use, the using, the using of tax abatements. And we look forward to the discussion, and we'll see what happens tomorrow, and when, if it comes back here, we have to make sure that we have facts, solid facts, so that we can make a decision whether or not this is a tool that we're willing to exercise. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to, you know, concur with my colleagues on the council, and not to go retrench what was just said. The one thing is, with over 35 years that I've had in financial, retail, development and development of the locations, the thing about it, it's all being repositioned. You know, think this word, folks, reworks. Think the word, reworks, okay? Think the word, WeWorks, okay? A lot of office buildings, even what Councilwoman Cirillo said, are falling by the wayside because companies do not need large office complexes any longer. Think WeWorks. WeWorks just spent a billion three on the Lord &amp; Taylor building on Fifth Avenue, which will now become WeWorks and WeWorks Kindergarten. Think about that. So that's how we have to watch and that's our responsibility on the, on the council. And I will be at the planning board meeting tomorrow and we have to wait and see what's given back to the council, but I can assure you, we will look, I will look at it in a total financial thing, not to affect in a negative way the township of West Orange. As Councilman Cirillo talked about, the Abbott districts, Hoboken is an Abbott district, which is ironic because they got the highest property values. Okay? Do they need to be an Abbott district? No. Okay? But who pays for it? The residents of the township of West Orange. Now, I constantly hear about people, oh, development, all the kids are going to come into West Orange. Well, guess what, folks? And I've said it for years and when I was first elected to the township council. At this past Halloween, down at Roosevelt Middle School where they have their annual neighborhood Halloween party, there were 250 kids I never saw before. And you know where they came from? Not from new development, not from the Edison complex, which you can't right now, but it came from all the house sales that had been going on in the township of West Orange, and these are all new families moving into the township of West Orange. So don't come to me and say, oh, development and the school population. No, it's happening. It's happening in a natural course. Council President, I can't tell you. So, all right, that's happening in a natural course. Now, I'm not going to go on repeating what my colleagues have said. We'll wait and see what the planning board has to say, but I assure you that I will look at this on a financial basis and what I've done and understand that it won't negatively, negatively impact the township and the taxpayers of township of West Orange. But we have to look, we have to look forward. We have to think about what's going to happen five, 10 years from now. How would it impact the commercial base, how it's going to affect the taxpayers? That, and that's all I'm going to say on, on that portion. Now, I heard tonight about our forester and month-to-month contracts and looking at other towns and their foresters. Well, that's fine, but I'm waiting to see the new, you know, tree ordinance proposal. Okay? It's been a couple of months. I'd like to see it. I see a red line. What do you think? I, I value, especially Sally, I value your opinions and your scope and concepts. So I, as long, I think my colleagues and the administration would like to see your proposal to make the tree ordinance and even better ordinance to protect our forestry and to protect our environment. So that's what I'd like to see. And I'm sure it'll be a, a great document, but you know, enough of people, you know, saying, not saying you Sally, saying this, but you know, about our forester and everything else, let's get the document in place so we can use that as a stepping stone to make it even better. And whoever is the forester, give them a good tool to show what we need to do. And that, and that's what I'd like to see. So, uh, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, just very quickly, I appreciate everybody who came up and spoke tonight. Uh, I want to look into more about what's going on with the PNC bank. Obviously there's two, maybe three PNC branches here in West Orange. So I just want to clarify which one and so maybe at the next council meeting, uh, we can have that information. I know Mr. Mr. Sares has left, but.
He may know that.
Okay, okay. Um, also, uh, Mr. Malanga, I think you make a very good point about, uh, the, the schedule for downtown redevelopment. Uh, we actually, I actually have a copy of it, but I got to tell you, it's, it's too small for my, my eyes. So I'll, uh, I'll work with the administration. We'll get, get a legible copy and, and get it circulated. So thank you for asking for that. Um, and then about the, sort of the current redevelopment. First of all, Ms. Malanga, uh, I know you mentioned that the resources of residents are being, I don't think this was your word, taxed, but they are being strained, uh, by pulling together all this information and making it public. I just want to say thank you. It is not, your efforts are not going unnoticed. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, information that's flying around now that I think is going to contribute to, uh, to this discussion. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who, uh, who's doing that. Um, Mr. Malanga, thank you very much for this court opinion. I, I certainly want to read it. Um, the, the law, as, as you pointed out and as Councilwoman pointed out, the actual redevelopment law now, uh, barely mentions blight, doesn't even define it. So, uh, this will be very helpful, uh, to us, I believe. Um, Ms. Malanga, thank you for very much for bringing up, uh, the Controller Boxers Report. It's, uh, back in 2010. It's floating around the internet, um, but it's a very good, it's a very in-depth, detailed look at, uh, both the practice and the legal structure of redevelopment, uh, both what the law allows and doesn't allow, and also uses a lot of specific examples of rede, of redevelopment projects. And it, and it certainly is highly critical, but it, it, I would recommend, uh, people to read that, uh, just again, to get more background on this. And I'll, I'll find the link and, and put it up, uh, so that people can, can take a look at it. Uh, Mr. Dorff, thank you very much for bringing this up. I was not aware of this. So if you couldn't, if you could, please send a link to that material that you mentioned to council@westorange.org because that would, uh, that would be, uh, very helpful.
They're not there for, for a long time.
Thank you. Uh, just, just to sort of, um, provide a little bit different perspective than my colleagues tonight, uh, one, the issue, the, the primary issue of this whole debate is whether we as the council in West Orange should take advantage of the redevelopment law to provide tax subsidies that are in the redevelopment law that provide incentives to the private sector to invest in areas that the private sector won't do otherwise. Let me just read you the law. The, at the start of law, it says, "The legislator hereby finds, determines, and declares there exist, have existed, and persist in various communities of the state conditions of deterioration in housing, commercial, and industrial installations, public services and facilities, and other physical components, and supports of community life, and improper or lack of proper development, which result from forces which are amenable to correction and amelioration by concerted effort of responsible public bodies, and without this public effort are not likely to be corrected or ameliorated by private effort." So what that says to me is if the private sector is not doing its part in, because the conditions of the specific property are just so bad, then the pub, then the, the public sector has to become involved, provide the incentives, and that's where you get these tax abatements. You can have a tax abatement for up to 30 years. And the tax abatement comes in on the additional improvements that are made under the redevelopment law. But here's the situation that we have in West Orange from my perspective. The two major areas, Essex Green and Executive Drive, are not having trouble attracting private investment. Those two properties have recently traded at, uh, at a combined amount of over a hundred million dollars. So to my perspective, and I'm wait to be informed, uh, when the issue comes back to the council, looks like to me that the private sector is investing money in these properties. So I, I want to be sure that, that, that what we're talking about fits the facts like Councilman Cirillo was saying. The second area, the Eagle Rock Avenue area, actually, uh, came before the planning board, I guess, uh, last year. Was it last year?
I think it has been a year already.
Yeah.
It's two years ago.
But, and, and this is the area around Prospect Avenue and Eagle Rock Avenue, which we all know is an area that has, is highly valuable commercial space and has continued to attract millions of dollars. We've had, uh, CVS come in in the last couple of years after knocking down, uh, Pal's Cabin, and I'm, I'm sure that, that, that work was in the millions of dollars. You've had somebody come and buy the property where the Old Eagle Rock Diner is and is putting up a brand-new, larger building. They've invested millions of dollars. So a, again, I'm, what I'm seeing from 30,000 feet is that the private sector is investing and is ameliorating and correcting any sort of problems that are there. So what I'm trying to determine is, do we actually need to provide the incentives? Certainly the redevelopers, the developers think we need to provide the incentives because it just adds to their profits. But what happens is, we as a township, basically take a whole lot less in what the tax revenues would be if there weren't the incentives. And on these major projects, we're talking about millions of dollars over 30 years. So that's what I'm trying to weigh, is that do we really want to give away a great deal of the tax revenues that would be coming to, uh, us as a township? And when I say us, I'm talking about you guys, because you, you guys pay the taxes and so do we, uh, and to see whether that i- is worth it. And, um, so I encourage people to, to, to get more educated on this and to, and to contribute their, uh, their voices, just like we saw tonight and at the previous council meeting, at the planning board meeting tomorrow, uh, because this is certainly going to come back to us because the planning board conducts the study and then provides that study with a recommendation to the council. And it's the council that has to make the major decisions about whether to, in, in my opinion, potentially open the Pandora's box by certifying a redevelopment area, because once you do that, then you open up the potential for incentives. So I appreciate everybody coming tonight. I know this meeting is running really long, so, uh, unless, Mr. Sares, you wanted to add anything to that?
I'd have a quick question.
Okay.
I'd have a quick question for administration. Maybe Mr. Rose knows off the top of his head, so you understand why we're even entertaining the study. Uh, how much in tax appeals, what was the total for the properties that we lost in appeals for the property up at Essex Green?
Oh, I, I don't have that off the top of my head. I, um, in terms of the,
um... And from what I, I, right, there's appeals that haven't been, um, gone to court yet that are out.
It's over four million.
So we last, so the, we talk about, you know, abate, abatements, we've...
Over four million in, in the, in the assessed right.
Yes. This is why we have to do our due diligence. We already lost revenue from those properties. So I know everybody's thinking investors, investors, but we already lost revenue because of the trend, if nothing else. And this is over the past few years, even before they had, uh, bought the properties. Thank you. And that's the kind of information we're going to need to make a valid decision on if it's a benefit to move forward. That's if the planning board moves forward. Maybe Councilwoman McCartney could just explain why the planning board doesn't utilize the figures that we will work with in regards to the appeals tomorrow night, just because I know that question's going to come up. Because a question was asked to you at the last planning board meeting, how come the planning board isn't taking into consideration the, the abatements, rather, the abatement figures?
The planning board deals strictly with municipal land use. The council has the authorization for financial, any financial implications. Would not be addressed at the planning board meeting.
So this way folks know tomorrow night, if that's a, a question again that they are coming to ask, it just won't get answered.
Not, right, not at planning.
Councilman.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the issue of an area in need of re, uh, rehabilitation? No, area in need of redevelopment. Two, two, sorry, two totally different designations. Area in need of redevelopment. Isn't the tax abatement secondary? Just because you declare an area in need of redevelopment, it doesn't mean that you're extending a tax abatement, correct?
No, no.
So it's very premature to say that their financial incentives being extended to this area, even if it's declared as an area in need of, of redevelopment?
While it often follows that areas of redevelopment end up with some type of tax incentives or other incentives, um, it is not preordained and it is not always the case. It is often the case, that is true, and it is more prevalent than it is not. But the tricky, the tricky part of this, and it is tricky, is that the council has to decide, the council and the, the planning board has to decide the vision it has for a particular piece of property. Then the council has to decide whether or not that particular vision is attainable in a pure market environment. And if it is, then there's no need for an abatement or, or tax incentives. Um, and if it's not, and the council and the planning board and the community want to move forward with that vision, then oftentimes it requires some type of an incentive. And that's the tricky part, is making that decision. And when I say tricky, and it's tricky in the sense that not everyone agrees on what the criteria is. Not everybody, not everyone may agree on what the vision is or the importance of the vision. And that's where it, that's where you can get tangled up. Um, you know, I've, I've done, I've been involved in a lot of redevelopment projects. Some of them have not had, um,
Tax abatement.
Tax abatements, even though they were in a redevelopment zone. Uh, and some, and the vast majority did. Um, but the ones that didn't get it is because the economics of the deal didn't, didn't allow it. And therefore, it wasn't in the taxpayers' interest to, to award it. Um, so it, it does happen. And, and it's, it happens more in mature development areas than, than non-mature development areas, but it does happen.
I see. So, uh, my next question, if I may, Council-
Please.
With that classification, so what could happen? Can the council approve an area in need of redevelopment, but not a tax incentive at the beginning and later on consider a tax incentive?
That's in fact what, that's in fact what happens.
Two different orders?
That's in fact what happens.
Right, because it's two different pieces of policy.
Yes.
Okay? So my second question, Johnny, and I appreciate the, the clarifications. In the absence of a tax incentive, what are the incentives to, uh, a redeveloper or a business, um, a commercial owner?
Oh, there's other things, you know, bulk zoning, I mean, there's a lot of different things that, that are, are within the power of the municipality, uh, depending on the circumstances. I mean, and the municipal, and frankly, the municipality has more power, for instance. Uh, whereas you probably can't enforce design standards on, on properties that are not in a redevelopment zone, in, in most circumstances. In a redevelopment zone, you can always enforce design standards. So the municipality has a lot of power too. And so, again, when, when, when it comes before you, there's a lot of considerations. You know, obviously, no, no one likes the idea of, of, of giving tax incentives or, or financial incentives to someone, um, to, just to build a project. And, and so the, the standard has to be but for the incentive. The project would not be built. And it is a priority of the governing body and the community that the project be built. Those are the two things you have to put together, in my opinion.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the time, Council President.
Anyone else?
No. It seems like that's what you just read, Council President, in that, uh, in that statement that you made.
It looks like we're done. Madam Clerk?
Okay. We're going to review the consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, and executive session minutes of November 21st, 2017.
Abstain.
Consent.
Report of township.
I wasn't here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just, just want to note this, Madam Clerk.
I abstained. I'm sorry if you didn't hear me.
Oh, okay. No, I did not.
I wasn't here last meeting.
I didn't hear you. Okay, thank you.
Good night. Good night.
Good night.
Season's greetings.
Good night.
Um, report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Correspondence from Mayor Preusi, reappointing the Honorable Dennis Dowd effective January 1st, 2018, for a three-year term ending December 30th, 31st, 2020, and designate him as Chief Judge of the West Orange Municipal Court effective January 1st, 2018.
Consent.
Consent.
Bills. Are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions. Are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Council President, I have a question on, I have questions on C and F, and I don't know if you'd like to read the priority list that was given to us today on the, on E, on the community development block grant.
Why don't we, why don't we look at the CDVG stuff now? Because that's something that we could reprior, reprioritize if we wanted to.
Yeah, I have a question on the one item.
Let's just, uh, uh, look at that first, if you wouldn't mind. So for those of you who are following at home, uh, we annually apply for community development block grants, uh, that are managed through the county, and we have to provide block grants that are managed through the county, and we have to provide them with a priority list of projects that we'd like to support with these grants if we get them. And basically, it's a suggestion because what money we get depends on how much money is out there and how much the county decides to give to us. Is that, and which projects they want to give to us. So that's pretty much without too simplifying. So the, so I just want to throw this out to my colleagues. If we thought, we have the list, if we thought that we wanted to change the priority list at all, we can do that now. Just to start things off, to my way of thinking, the first two, the first two on the list, the Main Street Counseling Center, which always gets funding annually, and the Bethany Center for Champions, which I think does a really good job with a lot of youth here in town. Those are fine for me for the first two priorities. Then the other three are, are street improvements for a lot more money. But just wondered, did anybody else have any thoughts on that?
One question on the Bethany.
A question on Bethany?
Yeah. Which, you know, they do wonderful work, and I'm big supporter of theirs. Do they get an increase from last year? Are they buying something in particular, or is that what we give them every year?
No, I think this is less, I'm sorry. I think this is less than what I've seen in the past.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought last year was forty-five.
Not for Bethany.
It's usually a partial funding, and they don't ask for it every year.
Yeah.
I don't think they asked for it last year.
Since I've been here, no, they were here last...
Right.
No, they were. Okay.
They came back.
I know they were doing something special or, you know, extra, but no, they do phenomenal work. We've seen a great improvement in, with the, with the students and the kids.
So Mr. Sayers, Mr. Gross, do you know what the, what the money, because I understand that Bethany, all of these recipients have to make a proposal. Has anybody seen the...
I don't have the proposals in front of me, to be quite honest. If Mr. Lepore reviews the proposals, he goes over them with the mayor, and he sets a priority in order. But I can tell you that Bethany Church definitely utilizes that money for very good things for this township.
Yeah, I just wondered what they were, what the projects were.
In the past, they've always, they've always done a good job, and that's why we always work with them.
I'll just, I'll send an email to Mr. Lepore, asking to just send the council the application.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I could also talk to, you know, whoever's acting, so.
One of the things they're always looking for is vehicles. They'd like to purchase or lease vehicles.
Yeah, well, that's what I was just, I was wondering.
Because they do a lot of traveling for their, for their sports athletic teams.
Thank you.
Anything else? Does anybody want to change the priorities?
No, I'm okay with Mr. Lepore. I mean, street improvements is his thing, so.
And we will never see 660.
That's right. No, you're not going to see that. No, that's right.
We'll be, we'll be fortunate if there's a high, too.
Sometimes it gets up to four.
So we're done with CDVG? Because you have other issues.
Well, no, I do want to make a comment just about number three and four. That is, and you and I were both at the, again, area needed redevelopment on Central Avenue, and you saw the orange side, the walk-through, and, right, so we were there at, through the walk-through, and just, you know, if we have that mirror image of what they did in orange, I thought the building was magnificent. And as we toured, we saw the surrounding areas. So, um, street improvements go hand in hand with what's already being redeveloped there. So I would be in favor of seeing that happen, the street improvements on Tompkins and Stockman.
But you're good with the priority list as it is now?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on this resolution 250-17? We don't have a vote on it. We can just put in a consent agenda.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. And Councilwoman, you had the floor, because you had some other resolutions that you were asking about.
Oh, yes. I had, well, just on resolution 248-17, this would be for John. If, this was the Will Dan and the direct install, and here we were thrilled that we were getting such a, you know, savings on what they're doing, and now they say structurally again, they need work to be done. But it doesn't appear that that significantly reduces the amount that we expected to save.
Um, it extends the, it's a higher amount. We're getting more grant. It does expend, it does extend the timeframe about eleven days to break even, in theory.
Oh, okay.
Um, it, so it's pretty much the same deal, except that the state basically came in and said, "We won't fund the other unless you do the rest of it."
Oh, replacement work.
So it's either, it's, this is basically take it or leave it.
Okay. That's okay. It was still a good deal. And Council President, also on resolution F 251-17, this was the authorization to accept nineteen thousand square feet of space at Pleasant Valley Way, at, you know, the Pleasantale Presbyterian Church. My question is that if that space has already been designated as a commuter lot or municipal parking for the municipality from the church, the church was tax exempt. If Chase has now purchased that, does it, it doesn't remain tax exempt? Are there, my question is, are there any conditions that go with the conveyance of this parking space, of these parking spaces?
That's exactly why they're giving it to us, so they don't have to pay taxes on it.
We haven't had any discussions about that.
No, right.
But there were discussions about keeping it for commuters. And part of the issue was that they said they would consider donating it to the township. As time went on, they decided that's what they want to do, and I agree with the councilmen as well, because they don't want to pay taxes on it. So they don't need it.
And, nor the maintenance for the use. And in fact, most likely, if they retained ownership of the land, they would probably win a tax appeal for that portion of it to be tax exempt anyway, if we were the exclusive users.
If we're using it.
So it's probably, obviously, it's to clean up that question once and for all, as well as that they don't have to pay any maintenance or liabilities that come along with it. If we're the only ones using it, it's certainly a reasonable request.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other, anybody want to pull anything?
I don't want to pull, but I just have a question. On 254-17, the Sunlight for stop-loss coverage, so that, that decrease, which was great, but we didn't change a deductible, did we, in order to get that decrease?
No, in fact, it's a better, our threshold deductible is the same, but the top is lower. So our aggregate threshold is lower than, than, lower than the current company, so.
Okay. And then on the RX, that decreased as well, which, which is better for us, but that was less claims?
Well, ultimately, you don't get, your insurance rates don't go down unless you have good claims experience. And, you know, we've done reasonably well with prescription claims over the past few years. Last year, we had a pretty big bump, but overall, in general, we've done all right in the last three or four years. This year, we're going to have a decrease, it's even better.
That's it. Thank you.
So you guys were, might have been mixing the two healthcare-related things. You were talking about 254, which is the stop-loss coverage.
Yeah. I asked about the deduction. Yeah, I moved over to the other. Yeah, he, he, yeah, I didn't name the resolution, but I refer to it as the prescription plan. He speaks, Michelle. He understood.
I follow the bouncing.
I torture him enough during my phone call, seeing us have follow-me. I apologize to the public.
If I could, Councilwoman, are you done?
Oh, yes.
Because I just wanted to follow up on, just a question about 254-17. Maybe you could give Mr. Gross a minute elevator speech on what stop-loss coverage is and why you're recommending, what you're recommending?
Okay. Stop-loss coverage is, comes into play because we are self-insured. So we, we pay for our employees' and retirees' claims directly. That's a benefit for us, because we cut out administrative cost of the insurance company, including their profits. We pay a third-party administrative process to claims, but we are at risk for the claims. And most of the time, that's fine, because on average, you know, we're going to have our, you know, some people will use it more one year, and other people will use it more the next. But then you get, you run across a catastrophic situation, two or three, maybe four a year, with our size of group, where literally the sky's the limit as to what it might cost. And if you didn't have this type of coverage, which is basically reinsurance over the top, saying, "Okay, once any particular claim goes above two-hundred thousand, this insurance kicks in." So, persons' claims go over two-hundred thousand within the year this insurance kicks in. So this protects us from a catastrophic, unless we, there's a recent story, it's an incredible story. This particular business, I believe it was, was, decided they were going to go without this, because their claim, their claims experience was pretty predictable. And they ended up with a claim with a young lady who's had some rare disease and had to get, her medication was four-hundred thousand dollars a month.
Oh, that's insane.
A month.
Per month.
Per month.
Oh, that's insane.
So, you know, you're talking, just on that one person in a group, five million dollars at all, and so that company obviously has, has issues. Bottom line to it is, is that this particular policy is from a company different than we used last year. The premium for the policy is better than what was quoted for us from our, from the other vendor. It's the, we have a stop-loss as well, a total loss. So we have an individual, on an individual, we can have over two-hundred thousand, and we have just nine and a half million of approximately, of total, of total claims. If our total claims go over that, then they pay. So it really makes a lot of sense for us, for us to do that. They also have a, I'll call it an interesting bell or whistle in it, it's a thing called a laser charge, which basically, you know, insurance companies can laser, laser people out of the process, so that, because they've had a bad year last year, they won't reinsure that the, instead of two-hundred thousand, their, their stop-loss goes to two-fifty or three-hundred. This particular policy, they won't be allowed to do that upon renewal now. At the same time, they could, they can up the premium up to fifty percent in the future too. So there's some room in there for, so it's, it's an interesting facet to this. It's good to have. It's not the driving force behind it. Driving force behind it is we're saving money on premium, we're saving, we'll save money on the top end if we ever hit it, and...
And it's lowering the deductible, isn't it? I mean, it's, it's lowering the expected, expected claims.
Lowering the top, the top, the maximum aggregate cost is less than, it's not lower than last year's, but it's less than last year's company gave us upon renewal.
So I was on the phone with our consultant for about an hour and a half today, and I thought, and I could be confused, because we talked about a lot of things, but I thought he said that there are no laser provisions in the proposed, in the proposal from Sunlight.
That's correct. A laser is not a good thing.
Right. No, I understand.
Right.
And I think he was saying that there were three or four lasers in last year's plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's good for us, because if we have that continued claims experience, and I don't know who the people are, you guys have a better idea, but if we have that same experience, that's going to be beneficial to us, because...
It definitely is, but it's, it doesn't give me as much comfort, because they also have fifty percent, they can go up fifty percent in premium. So, so it's, that could eat up some of that laser. But, but it's, it's definitely, it's definitely a big provision to have, because if you ended up with a lot of catastrophic claims, upon renewal, that'd be a big problem, so.
So if I could continue the questioning, can you relate that to agenda item D, resolution 249-17, where we're having one-point-three million dollars in an emergency borrowing, specifically for the healthcare? So maybe you could just relate how, why stop-loss hasn't saved us?
Stop-loss doesn't help you. Any, any set of claims where an individual member or their family is under two-hundred thousand. So this is, this is just the number of claims of normal, regular, everyday, non-catastrophic claims that we're having. We may or may not use this one-point-three million. Part of the problem is, is it's December 5th, and, six? Six.
Fifth.
And I got to get to the end of that. I have three more weeks of payments. We pay by the week. And in October, September, end of September, October, the beginning of November, we got it very hard with like half a million dollar a week, half a million dollars a week with the claims, which is an outrageous amount. It really blew us out of the water. So my concern was always, well, what do we do if that trend continues? Now, it hasn't, it's healed up, but there's nothing to say in the next three weeks, we don't end up with three, five-hundred-thousand-dollar weeks. So I just need the cushion to deal with. I'm hoping that when we, when we resume this meeting, that I'll be able to report to you that we had to use very little of this, but it's just a precautionary housekeeping. And I do not intend on, on funding this. We have to pay it off next year, whatever we use, we have to pay it off next year anyway, and I have sufficient funds internally to, to fund it. So we will, we will not be going out to borrow this.
Okay. And as long as we're talking about healthcare, maybe you could do another minute elevator explanation on agenda item B, resolution 247-17, relating to our prescription benefit through Benecard, or the proposed...
I'm sorry, which resolution?
247-17, agenda item B.
Okay, yes. Okay. This is pretty straightforward. This is insurance, just regular old insurance, like everybody else has. We have it for our groups, for our employees, and for our retirees. We got a renewal, renewal for this for next year at minus one and a half percent of premium. It's a straight premium. We're not at risk of anything above and beyond our premium. It's a company that we've been now with, like, four years, and, you know, we've had, hindsight, we all like to say hindsight is twenty-twenty, and, and we've, we've been with situations we, that weren't good for us, for our employees, for the administration, and for our legal costs, and just a lot of things in the past. We're, we're really happy with this company, and we feel very confident in the product that they're giving us. We're getting good penetration in terms of our employees being able to go to the pharmacies they want to go to, and the drugs that they're, that are on their formularies seem to be working out much better than they have in the past with other carriers. So we're very happy with it.
So our meeting has gone so long that my battery is dying, in the process of a slow death, so I don't have access to my notes. But the, the prescription insurance is going to fix our costs at about four-point-two million. It's down slightly, a point or two percentage point.
Yeah, about a point. About a point.
And on the other, on the stop-loss, I don't have access to my, to the total premium this year, but do you, do you have that handy, just to give people a perspective of why we're spending time on this? Because these are, these are, you know, healthcare costs is one of the top three.
It's a little over six-hundred thousand dollars, and we're saving fifty, so that, you know, to give you...
Okay. Thank you.
Rather than tie up looking...
Thank you. I'm sorry, I sort of interjected myself. Councilwoman, do you have anything else that you wanted to ask about?
No, I was good, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Council President, one more comment, not a question, just a comment?
Sure.
I know we're going to have a full presentation from the Downtown Alliance in our January meeting, but I do want to commend the Downtown Alliance Board presenting a proposed budget here with the, an amazing amount of content on our downtown, and the continuous crowd drawing, successful events that are happening again this year. With all of that happening, and even with a reduction in their projected, projected Sid assessments, they come in with the same, same amount. So they did the same thing last year. I just commend the Board for this proposed budget. I look forward to the presentation. Just looking forward to the presentation.
What actually, they gave us a brief summary in, in today, and it's up on the website, it's on the website. They're going to give us a much more detailed breakdown of what they did this year and what they project next year. Does the, does the administration actually have that document, this sort of second, more detailed budget document? Because I'd like to get a chance to look at it.
We don't have it yet.
Okay, okay. So I'll just send the executive director an email and just ask for it soon rather than later, because I'd like to get it ahead of the meeting. Well, heck, we've got, we've got our council liaison. Perhaps you could get ahold of it and get it to us a few days ahead of...
Turn my notes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, great, thank you, thank you. So anything else on the resolutions? Nobody wants to pull anything?
No, we're not pulling anything.
No.
You sure?
Positive.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. We have ordinances on second and final reading, Ordinance 2532-17, and ordinance establishing Chapter 23, Section 5 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township, Town to West Orange Skate Park. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia.
Yes. Under state law, all ordinances that are heard on second reading, second and final reading, require a public hearing. I hereby open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this ordinance, please raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, come down to the lectern, and you can speak. Is there anyone who'd like to wish, anyone who, now I'm working too long, anyone who wishes to speak on Ordinance 2532-17? Please raise your hand. Just in case you didn't hear me, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, I close the public hearing and open it up to my colleagues if anybody would like to speak. Councilwoman.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with the counts, with my colleagues. I had asked Mr. Keough, because when I went to the opening of the skate park, the sign
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
was on the back wall, which as a mom, I like to see all the rules when I first walk into
Yes.
Council President Krokovia.
Yes, motion carries, ordinance is approved.
No, that was on...
That was introduced.
the park.
This is what I mean, I've been doing this a year, and I've been working too hard with
We explained we needed to pass the ordinance, and he has signs all ready to go, and you
Councilwoman Cirillo, so I apologize.
could probably concur with this, for the front where you enter the park, that will tell
Under state law, all ordinances on second and final reading require a public hearing.
you you need a helmet.
Right. And the font is so small on that sign that's in the far...
Yeah. So, any case, you know, they did a nice job on the park, went to the opening, very nice.
I therefore open the public hearing and ask anyone who would like to speak, please be recognized by the chair, come down to the lectern, and make your comment. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Please raise your hand. If there's anybody who'd like to speak, please raise your hand.
So, that's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Seeing no hands, I close public comment. For whatever cost, I think it's somewhere north of $190,000, it should be really nice. It's public hearing. I can't get off this soon enough, I know that's what you're all thinking. Any of my colleagues like to discuss?
Yes, it should.
Any other comments?
Make a motion to...
Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve 2533-17? Is there a motion to adopt 2532-17?
Some move.
Second.
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo? Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Guarino? Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes. Yes.
Council President Krokovia. Council President Krokovia.
Yes, motion carries. Yes, motion carries, ordinance is approved. And the ordinance carries.
2534-17, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic, Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Okay. 2533-17, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic, Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township, Handicap Parking Spaces, 82 Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township, Handicap Parking Spaces, 82 Valley Way, and 24 Park Terrace. Valley Way, and 24 Park Terrace. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading? Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move. Some move. Second. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Cirillo? Councilman Cirillo?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia.
Yes, motion carries, ordinance is approved.
No, that was on...
That was introduced.
This is what I mean, I've been doing this a year, and I've been working too hard with Councilwoman Cirillo, so I apologize. Under state law, all ordinances on second and final reading require a public hearing. I therefore open the public hearing and ask anyone who would like to speak, please be recognized by the chair, come down to the lectern, and make your comment. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Please raise your hand. If there's anybody who'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, I close public comment. It's public hearing. I can't get off this soon enough, I know that's what you're all thinking. Any of my colleagues like to discuss?
Make a motion to...
Madam Clerk?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve 2533-17?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia.
Yes, motion carries, ordinance is approved.
2534-17, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic, Subsection 7-29.1, Speed Limits in General, and Subsection 7-33, School Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia.
Yes. Under state law, all ordinances heard on second and final reading require a public hearing. I'm opening the public hearing now. If you would like to speak on this, just this ordinance, please raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, and come down to the lectern. If anyone would like to speak on this during the public hearing, please raise your hand. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Seeing no hands, I close the public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this?
Just saying, Council President, I'm very excited about this because it's adjusting and protecting our schoolchildren and...
Could you just speak into the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
You know this better.
I know this better, okay. That I'm really excited about this, as I'm sure my colleagues are, with, you know, adjusting the speed limits, especially on Pleasant Valley Way, and within the school zones, to move along our process of complete and safe streets. And I'm really happy and I appreciate the council's, you know, support of the continual improvement of our safe streets.
Yes, and reducing the speed limit.
Yes.
So eventually, the signs are going to go up, so you've got to watch this, guys, got to slow down in the school zone.
That was my question.
On the south end.
The signs will be going up.
We'll put on the website too, so, well, not that, who's going to really read the website?
You can drive slower if you want, you don't have to wait to see the signs up. You can drive slower if you'd like. Nothing wrong with that. It's safer. Okay, any other comment?
Nope.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2534-17?
Some move. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krokovia.
Yes, motion carries, ordinance is approved.
No ordinances on first reading. Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
I would like, oh, go ahead.
No, I do, thank you. I would like to have an executive session put on our next January 9th meeting to discuss the email that was just received on the Redwoods' motion for intervention.
Would that go on the new one or the recessed? Would that go on the new agenda or the recessed agenda?
Don't we usually have two different meetings on the first meeting?
Yeah, we continue this one and then we do the new one, so that was my question. So we'll do this on the new one.
So Councilwoman, you might want to give some context to why you're requesting that?
It's a matter of litigation, just to further explain what this intervention is.
This is intervention in the, the proposed intervention into the affordable housing situation here in West Orange. So we have, already have one intervenor, the property owner on the property adjacent to West Essex Highlands, and now this is the second one who is also requesting to be included. And essentially, what's happening is the current state of the affordable housing law in the state is adjudicating all of the proposals for affordable housing through the local superior courts, and it's allowing developers to intervene and offer their proposed developments a portion of that to help the town meet its affordable housing obligation, and at the same time, get what they're looking for in terms of non-affordable housing properties. So Councilwoman McCartney and I have been at many meetings already on a proposed mediation on a settlement with the first intervenor, as well as the State Fair Housing Action. I'm sorry, I can't think of the name now because I'm so tired. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We haven't had a meeting in several months. I think we're waiting for the political dust to clear, and one or two other of these adjudications that are going on in the state, to see how those play out. But here's a second one, and I think it's a great idea to have, to have an executive session.
Thanks.
Good.
So could you just check with Mr. Tranquitt, see if there's any reason why we shouldn't?
Yeah, what's that? Yeah, oh, right. All right.
Is that it? I just wanted to throw out, I know this is my last meeting, and I probably should have brought this up a long time ago, but we've actually briefly discussed this at a couple of previous meetings, and it's about potentially changing our public comment process to, we've heard multiple times this year, people coming up and speaking and saying, I'd like to engage in a dialogue with the council as opposed to the way we're doing it now. Councilwoman Castellino is giving herself whiplash again because she's really opposed to this.
No.
But they have wanted to have interaction as opposed to the way we're doing it now, which is that they speak, and then after everybody finishes speaking, then we respond. And I just wanted to throw this out with three, I'm sorry, with two conditions, two proposed conditions, that we allow people to have a discussion if they want, keep them to the five minutes that they already have, so we won't be potentially extending their conversation at all. And make it, the second condition is to make it conditional, like we try it for, I don't know, two or three meetings, see how it goes. If we like the way it goes, we can continue, and if not, it's fully within our power to change back to the way we do it now. And I thought, given that we had, I thought, a pretty good experience this year, I know there was a couple of, couple of times where I thought that we were, that the speakers were less than civil, but out of the scores of speakers that came up, I thought it would be good. And it might just be something that we can try, the people who come up to speak would have the option. They can say, you know, and I think most people are going to say, I don't want to engage, I don't want to talk to you guys, I just want to tell you what my problem is, or what my comment is, and I'm going to say that and go sit down. But there probably are a few people a year who want to engage in a dialogue. We don't give them any extra time, and we can figure out how, you know, to be most efficient. But I don't want to put words in your mouth, Councilwoman, but I think you were talking about how we used to do it.
I think we did try that, and we found out that it was a long time past 10 o'clock when we went, when we took that route. But, you know, with, I want to say respectfully, that there are often times, though, we're telling people not to speak, and yet we're responding to them after the fact. And there were many times that people did ask if they could say one more thing, and we did allow it. Right, so I don't, I don't think we would change the protocol of that. I think five minutes gives us plenty of time. And, you know, we just had that really, really healthy discussion on Luddington. I think that took two or three council meetings to discuss Luddington Terrace and everyone that came out on that. But we also received a lot of emails that we could respond to.
Yeah.
And I think that if, you know, maybe we put something here, or you could put something on the tape that says, Council at West Orange, if people want to send us notes, you know, we are all accessible, we have always been accessible, to let them know that, you know, we can respond to any number of questions. Right.
Madam Clerk, could you just...
I'm sorry.
I know you're, I know you're very modest, but please, if you want to chime in.
Yeah, no, I'm just, if the public wants to reach you, they would normally call my office and ask, you know, sometimes they ask for your telephone numbers, I do not give them out, but I will take their information and get you the message, and, you know, and I know that you all will answer, and, you know, I've never had somebody call back and say, you know, well, he just didn't call me back, or she didn't call me back, or whatever. So I think that's probably the best idea, because I think that five minutes is enough time, and literally every single meeting, we have somebody saying, oh, you know, can I just finish up my remarks? And, you know, every time I say, your time is up, it's almost like a joke.
Did you get it all?
It just continues, so I think it would just prolong, and I think if they want the opportunity to talk with you, they have that opportunity, and they will, you know, they can get in touch with you via email, telephone, writing a letter, you know, meeting with you, I mean...
That happens?
Yeah, you have met with people.
I know I've been a little bit more lenient than the five-minute cutoff, and I just feel a little obligation to let them finish their thought, but I understand where you're coming from. My thought is that it is a unique opportunity for people to come at a council meeting and air a grievance or air a comment. It could be, occasionally, people compliment us. But it's an opportunity to do that in a public hearing and videotaped, at least when it's not unplugged, like, which happened earlier today. And it just, particularly on an issue like redevelopment that is going to affect every taxpayer in town, it's a unique opportunity for them to come before this, and if they, it's up to the, it's up to the people who want to speak, because my feeling is, you know, we work for them, and they should be able to, they're our bosses, they should be able to, if they want to have a dialogue with us for five minutes, no longer than five minutes, and I, I know I've been a little bit lenient on that, but that's my thought, that there's, that this is a unique opportunity, and there are some situations that the township might benefit, or the residents might benefit, from being able to watch it and hear the interaction here at the council meeting as opposed to going through email or individual phone calls. Councilwoman.
So you and I have debated this a couple times. So in my experience, I know everybody's tired of hearing me say when I sat on the school board, but when I first got on there, we had that open dialogue, and it just, we were, it just went on and on. It's really hard to police. I think we do a great job of getting everyone's question answered. I know that because sometimes administration says to us, do you have to answer every question? And not that we don't want to, but it prolongs the meeting. It's, and I'm afraid that I get, I understand you want to try the five-minute rule with having a conversation within five minutes, but then someone's going to say, well, I didn't get to really talk because you responded to me within the five minutes. I think we've been doing this a long time. I, it's hard for the people that are waiting to speak, that come to the meeting, that want to hear an answer, they get their questions out, they make their statements, they comment. We, on the other hand, I think we have taken the time when there isn't clarity with the speaker, and we need to ask them. I don't mind us breaking that rule a bit, a little more, maybe one of us raise our hand and say, I didn't understand what, you know, clarify the, you know, what they're trying to make the statement to us so we could properly respond. But I'm not speaking for myself, I know the rest of you, we all give folks after meetings plenty of time. I've stayed in the parking lot with people to after midnight, and the cops keep driving by to make sure we go home because they get nervous that we're out there speaking, right, Council? So I think we do a good job, but I think it's just mindful of not only the people in the audience that have to get up and go to work the next day, but also to the administration and even us that have to get up. Again, I signed up for this job, I have no problem, I could talk to 2:00 in the morning without any issue. But it's, I think we just have to, it will get out of hand, so I'm not going to support that. However, I do support if there's no clarity. if there's a clarity. And then when the room is empty, like now, and if it was public comment, we have gone over and had dialogue back and forth when there's only a couple people in the audience. So, again, that's how I feel about that. But I have something else for pending matters, once we're wrapped up with this.
Well, Council President, let me just finish up on that.
Sure, please.
So, with pending matters, if it is a topic that we see that there is a population of people that want to continue the discussion, that could be just what's on our agenda, the pending matters. So, it could, the conversation could get carried toward the end of the meeting as opposed to having that.
Not, not with the public, excuse me, Councilwoman, not with the public. We'll be here till 2:00 in the morning.
Then you're opening it up again for...
Trying to be fair.
Yeah. I'd be fine with that. I agree. It probably would add time. My proposal is not to give anybody more time than we're already giving them, right? They can decide whether they want to talk for five minutes, or whether they want to talk for two minutes, and then dialogue for three minutes, or...
I think we should just take a vote, or we'll be here till 11:00.
Well, I don't think, yeah.
We don't have to take a vote.
We don't have to vote.
I would yield to the Council President to see what kind of format she was...
How quickly they forget.
Council President, can I chime in?
Be taken out with the trash.
[laughing]
I'm sorry, Mr. Casey.
Can I chime in here? You know, you really don't have to change the rule. You guys always have the flexibility of a motion to suspend a rule, to, you can enter into a dialogue in special circumstances. After, you know, it's not, it doesn't have to be written in black and white. The council president can use his or her discretion, open it up to the council for, you know, are they willing to do this, take a vote on it quickly, and then you can do that. I mean, it's not, and I think that the general rule is probably best to follow what you've been doing, but on occasion, there may be justification for a special circumstance. So, but you have that flexibility.
It's fair enough. Right.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I think we have been fair and respectful.
The, the other thing that I wanted to do is to try to be consistent, to have a process and policy without getting, you know, huge structure or something, but to consistently deal with this issue for everybody. So, I'm worried that if somebody comes up and they're obviously going to lambaste this, or whatever, or they have before, and they probably want to again, I don't want to deprive them of their ability to speak just because we're pretty sure we're not going to like what they say. And I just, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely not. That's not why I recommend that.
But I, but I, wait, 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 just one more time, one more time. So, I thought that in the seven years that I've been here, that that's occasionally happened, very rarely. But I, I felt like there were people who wanted to say something, but we didn't let them because we didn't want them to be speaking, whereas in other situations, we do allow people to speak. So, I just wanted, the other thing is, I just wanted to be consistent. And I'm not accusing anybody or anything, but I'm just saying, if we do that on a case-by-case basis, we run the risk of somebody saying, "Hey, I want to have a dialogue with you," and we saying, "We don't want to have a dialogue with you." But, I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
And again, I get frustrated with this because I feel we give a lot of time to the public, and yes, there are situations, because there's people that could go longer than five minutes, but at any given time, I've never seen any one of us not speak to that person afterwards, or the next day for an hour. I mean, there's so many times I'll have a conversation, and then the next day, I'm talking to that person for another hour. So, I just think for fairness in the audience, for fairness to the staff, there's only so many hours in a day. I mean, if it's, if it's a light meeting, and we need, we've done that, though. I just, it's when it's really crowded, and yes, there will be meetings where people get upset, and you have a large room, and all the more reason why you need to be fair and give everybody the same amount of time, or you'll just, you'll be crazy. Or we'll be crazy.
I think it goes to Ken's point about, well, I'm just saying, I think it goes to Ken's point. It would depend on the topic. It depends on what comes before us to...
Yeah.
Which would...
Can I also add one thing?
If I could, before, before you, can I just, just respond to the very briefly? Because I just want to make sure it's clear. I'm not suggesting that we give any additional time to anybody. I'm just saying, they can decide with their five minutes how they want to do it. If they want to just talk for two minutes and sit down, great. If they want to talk for...
The Council President, how do you cut us off? Because we tend to have diarrhea of the mouth ourselves. So, not to paint a picture, but, you know, let's speak the way we're going to speak. So, you know, so how do, so you have someone up there, and they're saying, "Well, you used up all my three minutes babbling on," and then who's going to be the person to have the dialogue? So...
I need to tally.
I, I just think you're opening up the door. I think if we have a situation, again, and you've done it before, where we've given more time to a certain person, like, there's been folks that come down, or they've never been here before, or never had the unique experiences speaking at the podium, and they're a little timid, and we, I think we've given them extra courtesy time, or try to help them along and try to converse with us. But I just, I just think five minutes, and you're, five minutes goes, like, when you're having a conversation back and forth, it's going to go fast, and then they're going to feel cut off. And I, it's really going to be hard to police, so I, I won't subtract.
I'd be glad to run the clock. But anyway, Mr. Casey.
I just want to, all of you have spoken about tomorrow night's planning board meeting that you intend to go. Obviously, Susan is on the board. She's a different situation. But I assume that all of you realize that because of the Open Public Meetings Act, you're going to listen, not speak.
Absolutely, right.
Other than Susan, so...
Right.
Anything else?
So, before we get past that, is there any, is there, I just want to make sure, we don't have to take a vote, but is there any, anybody else who wants to try to, try this for a couple of meetings?
Yep.
So, I'm hearing four no's. Okay.
Yeah.
Four no's. Four no's.
Four no's. Let's go to four no's.
Councilwoman, did you have something else?
Yeah, this is going to be real quick. This is for Mr. Gross and Mr., and Mr. Sayers. If you just pass this to them. So, last year, I know our budget's coming up, and it's not going to be for a while, so I want to give to you ahead of time. This, this was our capital summary from last year. So, I just, I just wondering if my colleagues, I just, I, I know, I know we get information from the directors at our budget hearing. So, I'm just passing along, this is the list that you gave us last year. I just wondering, this year, when we get our budget this year, if we can know what got completed on the, on the list. So, we have a picture of what did get completed, and then so we know, we could compare it to the list of what has to get done. So, if it didn't get completed, if it gets bumped to the following year. Because I realize things happen, things, projects don't always get completed, but I just wanted to know what got done and what didn't get done.
I do expect with the next meeting to have a resolution for special services for the firehouse.
Good.
Oh, good. Good.
And again, you know, we've been talking...
I know that's a particular...
Yeah, especially a little detail, like, in interior and exterior repairs or renovations to five firehouses, you know, did we get bathrooms, roofs, or, you know, a little more detail.
That, that scope will be in the award, like, the rule.
Okay.
Right. I spoke to Mr. Lepore about that. He said that was part of your scope document.
So, thank, thank you. That's all I have. Sure.
And I'm sure Mr. Sayers will always remember this, the last council meeting where Joe Krokovia's the president, wouldn't let the meeting end. I just want to ask a quick question while I've got, while I've got Mr., Mr. Gross here. Mr. Gross, just wanted to ask you about the supplemental debt statement.
Yes.
Because we approved the 1.3 million, our, we have a new supplemental debt statement. I know I've been badgering you for weeks to put up, it's already online. Okay, because I was going to say, I thought maybe you put the previous one. Okay, good, good.
To be less confused, I think I'm going to keep one up there, whatever's the most common.
Yes, okay, good, good. So, our debt's up to almost 86 and a half million. This is issued or authorized, not just issued. So, some of this is not that we've issued, but it's, it's historically, I think it's a historically high number for, for our township. Anyway.
Well, we're well below the state level's 3.5, and we're 1.461 ratio.
But we're getting there.
Yeah, we're, we actually, we pay off debt, so we, it fluctuates up and down.
Okay, okay. I'm going to ask Mr. Sayers to make a motion to recess our meeting. I'm just kidding. I know you want to go. We need to, we need to make a motion to recess the meeting, and we'll reconvene on January 9th. Reconvene this meeting, and we do it for paperwork purposes, because there are certain things that we have to do in January that we can't do now, having to do with the 2017 budget. Is that succinct? And then we will also have a regular meeting that will have, hopefully, very few resolutions and very few ordinances. And the meeting will go much faster because I won't be sitting here.
I make a motion, we recess until January. I make a motion, we recess until January.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Meeting is recessed.
Thank you, West Orange. We'll see you again January 9th, 2018. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Happy Hanukkah.
Yep.
Happy Kwanzaa.
Kwanzaa.
Kwanzaa.